Okay, we're gonna start this meeting so if we can have everyone find a seat or places to stand. Bonnie, this is Commissioner Bullock, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, Commissioner Bullock.
All right, welcome to Planning Commission for the May 7th, 2025 meeting. We will start this meeting off with a prayer by Commissioner Mitchell and the pledge by Commissioner Sheel.
Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful to be here this evening, we're thankful for those who are in attendance. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet and to go through the different items that are on our agendas this evening. We pray that that would be with all of us, that we can go through each item in a professional, professional way. And share our thoughts and ideas and feelings with one another and so in a calm and respectful manner. We pray that that would continue to bless all those who serve and help with our city and that we can continue to make this a wonderful place to live for all of us. And we thank goodness we pray and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
All right, item one on our agenda is the, is the approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Sheel, I move that we approve the minutes for tonight's meeting, the agenda for tonight's meeting.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I have a second.
I have a first by Commissioner Sheel and a second by Commissioner Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number two is the approval of the Planning Commission minute, meetings from April 16th, 2025.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I move that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Doug and I are confused, the minutes from last, or last, last meeting.
I have a first by Mitchell and a second by Commissioner Anderson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item 4A. Oh yeah, sorry about that. Item number three, declarations of abstentions in complex, does anyone have any, with anything on the agenda?
I have none.
Okay, now we're on to four. Item 4A, Z dash 25 dash 10, request to add an agtor business overlay zone, roughly 29.44 acres located at 3400 South Washington Fields Road to the, to the existing A20 zoning designation. The applicant is Staley Farms, Staley Family Farms LLC, and we will turn this over to Eldon.
Thank you, Commissioners. The total area of this site is approximately 29.44 acres and located at 3400 South Washington Fields Road. The agritourism overlay zone is intended to provide agricultural related products and experiences to the public. It is intended to allow farmers to the ability to generate supplementary income while still promoting the preservation of agriculture properties throughout the city with the agricultural land being maintained in a manner that is consistent with the farm's main agricultural productive uses and historic condition. Title IX, Chapter 12, D, Section 4 in the city code provides a list of possible uses to be used in the overlay zone. And the applicant is asking for the following uses on their site. We can, we'll run through those here real quick. And those, Drew, if you go to the next exhibit, it spells out where all of these uses are going on that site. So use number one is a bakery slash cafe for farm products. Use number two is barn dances. The applicant is not including items three, four, and five. Use number six is the carriage house slash wedding venue. Use number seven is a community garden. And in the code, it is parentheses rent a row. Use number eight, community supported agriculture. Use number nine is conference slash educational center. Use number 10 is a corn maze. Use number 11 is educational classes. Use number 12 is farmer market, open air, so outside. Use number 13 is farmer market indoor. Use number 14 is farm museum. Use number 15 is farm tours. Use number 16 is food concession stands. Use number 17 is gift shop. Use number 18 haunted house. Use number 19 is hayrides. Use number 20 is health farm. Use number 21 is miniature market. Use number 22 is nursery. Flowers and such nature. Use number 23 is on farm store slash retail market. Use number 24 is petting zoo. Use number 25 is play areas. Use number 26 is recreational activities slash agricultural family activities. Use 27 is restaurants. Use number 28 is special events, which are allowed on this site. However, they will still be required to and submit a special use permit through the city. Such thing as the air, hot air balloon festivals, they recently had a truck event down there. Anything that's not included in this list, they'll need to submit a special use permit. Use number 29 is U-PIC operation, similar to kind of a Bountiful Basket situation there. And then finally, use number 30 is value added product processing. So the applicants stating that they're gonna use all of these uses designated in these general locations on the, the site map there. With these proposed uses, the applicant has identified the following hours of operation and employee help. Monday through Friday, daily, 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Saturday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM and close Sunday. The fall hours, Monday through Thursday, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Friday and Saturday, 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM and again Sunday. Weddings and special events ending at 11:00 PM. And then on to employee help here is one full-time employee year round. Eight to 12 part-time employees year round. And then lastly, seasonal or the fall employees is 100 to 200 part-time employees to help manage the haunted house, corn maze, and those larger events. The applicant has identified the busiest time of year being the fall season where they promote activities available for families to attend. The applicant has shown parking accommodations on the site plan and has a system in place to accommodate their patrons. The applicant provides parking attendants to direct and monitor traffic when large crowds are expected. To help with traffic concern, the applicant is moving towards online sales in which ticket quantities can be controlled by volume count so that once a certain number of sales occurs, tickets would no longer be, be sold. Staff is concerned with parking overflow and has added condition number seven to address this concern. Staff is also concerned with the ingress, egress points serving this property as they currently do not meet the access management plan. And staff has added condition number eight addressing this concern. Commissioners, if we will, just quickly run through these conditions here. Condition one, in case of conflict between the provisions of the agritourism business overlay zone, current zoning of the land, building codes adopted by the city or the subdivision ordinance, the more restrictive provision shall apply. Condition number two, new buildings and/or other structures added to the property that are intended to aid, assist, or associate with the agritourism business overlay zone shall first obtain the proper city approvals and applicable permits. Condition number three, pre-existing agriculture related structures exist on this site. The applicant assumes full responsibility for all pre-existing structures and pre-existing improvements on the premise, which include applicant's responsibility of fitness and function for any changes or modification to pre-existing structures for uses authorized under this overlay zone. Condition number four, agriculture shall be the primary use and shall remain as such. All ag tourism uses and activities shall clearly be incidental and accessory to the primary agricultural use. Condition five, agricultural land shall be maintained in a manner that is consistent with the farm's main agricultural productive uses and historic condition. Condition six, the agritourism business operation shall, unless in the winter season, actively and continuously produce an agricultural product for sale and purchase. In the event that the agriculture productivity ceases or becomes improperly maintained, the right to operate in ag tourism business under an overlay zone, zoning approval may be revoked. And then condition number seven, which was added by staff to address the parking states, patron parking shall be accommodated entirely on this site so that the patrons do not park on the public right-of-way or surrounding properties. Patron traffic and/or parking shall be monitored and enforced by the applicant so as to not burden the surrounding residents and traffic flow. Condition eight, ingress, egress points servicing this property will need to be addressed and placed in accordance with the access management plan prior to widening of Washington Fields Road. And lastly, condition number nine, any deviation from the submitted plans shall be submitted to and reviewed by the city and involve the proper approvals of such changes. It's quite a bit of information to, to take in there. Staff supports this zone change, it is in line with the recently adopted code that was amended a few weeks prior. That concludes staff report, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
You guys have any questions for Eldon?
Yeah, what are the sizes of the parking stalls? It just looks like there's 350 on here, but they look really small. Just because there's cars existing on the lot and maybe those are larger vehicles, but they don't look like it could fit in any of those stalls.
Yeah, great, great question, I, I did bring that up to the applicant and there should be a note on there, nine by, nine by 19 is the designated stall size for that. Yeah, which is the standard for the city.
Do you know if there's a maximum capacity for wedding and events and at the same time for the farm as a whole at any one point? You have people there for other things and then you have people there for a wedding or an event. Is there a maximum capacity?
For, for the use, no, you know, parking would dictate how many patrons could attend that. So there, there is no hard number. However, we, you know, staff is concerned with, with parking overflow there extending onto the streets. So that's.
So if there's 350 stalls, then 350? 550?
And in theory, in theory, they, they could have the option to use some of their vacant land as temporary parking for certain events as well. And so the city hasn't imposed a maximum parking limit. We have imposed a requirement that all parking be contained onsite, right? And, and so time will tell whether that's possible. And if it becomes impossible, I know, or should expect that the city would wanna have a conversation and, and fix that problem. We, we don't allow commercial uses to plan to park their patrons on public roads. We, we require commercial uses to have the ability to, to receive and park their patrons on, on the commercial land.
Technically, they could have 5,000 people on the farm and 300, and 550 stalls.
So, so the number of parking stalls and the number of people, I think, are disconnected. If they delivered people through an alternate means, you know, they bust them in or something, which happens at other locations in our area, then, then the number of people and the number of stalls becomes, you know, the correlations soften. If they allow more people onto their site, then they have stalls at that time and those, those parking needs spill out onto the road, they're gonna have a problem with the city. Yeah, it's expected that they park all of their patrons onsite.
Which would be monitored by someone else.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right, thank you.
Let's see, they, they do have on here, they've got the measurements of the parking is nine by 20. Thanks, Eldon. So this is a public hearing, if you guys are, if anyone is here to speak to this particular item, now is gonna be the chance, whether you're for it or against it, and this will go for the whole meeting. Please no yelling, cheering, any public clamor, as they call it, to or for anything so that doesn't sway the vote either way, cuz it, it's been known to happen. So at this point, we will open up the public hearing for this item. Oh yeah, and if anyone would like to come up and speak to this, please do so. Cool. We'll close the public hearing of this portion. Would anyone, would anyone like to speak with the applicant or?
Chairman, can I just give a summary on this from a legal perspective? So this is a zone, an overlay zone that has existed in city code for some time, probably 10 plus years. Recently, the city has worked in conjunction with the applicant to amend that to a, to a condition that more reflects the, the operation of the, of the farm today. And this would be the first application or the first applicant under that zone that we've ever had. And so it is, it is like any other new zone change, that's why we're holding a public hearing is we're giving the public a chance to talk about it. It's probably fair to also say that this zone change reflects a lot of what's been happening there for some time already. And so the public's probably well aware of the uses and the nature of that. So that might explain why there's not, not anybody standing up in the public hearing. But this has been, I would say, a, a priority goal for the city to, to help the applicant get the, the correct zoning that, that reflects the use that they're, they're making on it. I, I would, I think I could speak for the applicant and say they, they've wanted to have the zoning also reflect that use as well. And so we look forward to, to more of what the farm and, and its activities can bring to our community.
Thanks, that. If you guys don't have any other questions, we'll look for a motion on this.
This, this is Commissioner Mitchell, I move that we recommend approval of Z dash 25 dash 10, request to add an anti-agro tourism business overlay zone, roughly the 29.44 acres located at 3400 South Washington Fields Road. With the, how many? Four findings and nine conditions.
Anderson, I second.
Yes.
Correct. All, all zone changes are just a recommendation from this body, the decisions made by the city council at a later hearing.
So I have a first by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheel?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Tuppo?
Aye.
I am Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well, this will go to city council with a recommendation for approval. Item 4B, Z dash 25 11, a request to rezone approximately 0.31 acres located at 27, 272 West 200 South. Can we get that other, that side door closed to keep the noise in the hallway in the hallway? There should be room in here if they wanna come in. All right, item 4B, Z dash 25 dash 11, a request to rezone approximately 0.31 acres located at 272 West 700 South from the current R16 zoning to the proposed R2 zoning designation. The applicant is Travis Gibson, and we'll turn this over to Eldon for staff review.
The R2 request is for the purpose of developing the site with two units. You can see it highlighted there on the map. This particular location has a general planned land use designation of medium density, which supports the R2 zone and along with the R16 and the R18. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is R16 to the north, east, south, and west. The proposed zone change is in line with the general plan. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Z dash 25 dash 11 for the zone change request from R16 to the proposed R2, and this is on to the city council, based on the two findings stated in staff report there. That concludes staff report, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
So with the R2, is it like they're gonna be able to put a duplex on it or two homes on it? What is it that they were looking at doing?
Yeah, on this, on this site, they, they would bring a duplex.
And just get the one duplex, or will there be two duplexes? Two units, one duplex, okay.
It's just one parcel, two, just a duplex.
Correct.
You guys have any questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Davis, Eldon, just, we're chatting about this, just for clarity, it looks like that parcel is surrounded by single-family homes and all along the strip. Aside from the PUD that's, you know, kinda kitty-cornered from it. Is there, you know, any, any discussion, any, any concern, question with regard to that, having a duplex? You know, basically bookended by these single-family homes?
Yeah, great, great comment, you know, that, that, the R2 was created to, to bring more units for the downtown area, make it more dense. I don't believe we received any negative comments from the surrounding neighbors. I know there is a lot of family that lives right there. It, it meets city code, staff supports it, we're, we're on board with it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eldon. So is there, we'll open up the public hearing for this item 4B. If anyone here would like to comment on item 4B, now is your chance. Going once, all right. We will close the public hearing portion of item 4B. And if Commissioners have any other questions for staff or the applicant? If not, we'll look for a motion.
Commissioner, this Commissioner Anderson might, I mean, as far as, as far as, you know, general plan and all that, you know, works fine, my, my concern is if I look here on, you know, Google Earth and look at it, you've got, you got two, I mean, you're, you're like a single-family neighborhood and you got the strip of land right between two houses that you're gonna try and plop a duplex down right between their houses and it's like, pull up the map, Drew, and look at it, it's just, it sounds, sounds better on paper than it sound, than it does if you actually look at the land. I don't know if those neighbors next door will be particularly happy about, about this.
The neighbors were notified though, right?
Here and their family, but, but yeah, you're, you're, you're right. It's, it's the skinniest of the, the lots in that family subdivision. So the green thing there is part of, that's like a batting cage or whatever. But you, you see how it's just a skinny little piece of land right between those two houses? So I mean, I guess if, if the, if the two neighbors don't, are fine with it.
What's the lot?
That's my concern.
What's the width of the lot? Do we know?
You've got the width of the lot and then also the setbacks. Your, what are your setbacks on the, on the east and west of that lot, Drew? Yeah, the depth is where it has room to work with, right? Hundred-and-thirty feet deep and feet wide. You've got seventy feet width, minus twelve feet of side, side yard setbacks? Sixty-two? Fifty-two? Fifty-eight? Fifty-eight? Damn, if they, if they run it this way, you'd come in that way on it. I mean, I guess if, if it's all family, they don't, they don't mind. I just, I think they'd be screaming and hollering if it wasn't family, that's all.
Well, what's the setback? What was the setbacks?
Setbacks are twenties, sorry.
Okay.
Setbacks are twenty on the front, ten and ten on the sides, twenty in the rear. Seventy wide, minus, it can be still fifty foot wide by the depth, I'm still...
It is wide enough.
If they do a two-story, I mean, they, they could make it thirty feet wide and go two-story. They'd, they'd have a... Kitchen and living room down.
Third of an acre, that's over thirteen thousand square feet on it, so that's, and the minimum is twelve thousand in the R-two zone. So there are a thousand plus up above that, so...
Can they turn it sideways?
Yeah, they could do however they want to get in. That's the beauty of, you know, the R-two versus trying to do a flag lot sometimes. A flag lot pins you a little bit.
I mean, if it was, it'd be the backyard, but it'd only be ten feet, but it would still be fine.
Do a duplex, you know, east-west, it's going to have to be, you know, that'll be probably the side, I would imagine. I mean, you could try to do that, but it's going to be a strange floor plan. But it'll probably be, the front doors will probably be facing the west, I would imagine. They could face the east too, it depends on however they want to lay it out.
Yeah, the front door would be facing west, more than likely, right? So I mean, they still have to have the ten foot from the lot line? Or would they have to have twenty on it, where it would be a backyard?
You could do it, because that, we're really considering, you know, when we talk about front, we basically are talking about the street.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Regardless of how people, there's a lot of designs. I've got a couple builders on here know you can go side-load on your front doors. I mean, that's not uncommon. You can put the, the garages out toward the front or on the sides. They'll, they'll have a little bit of room to play with there, but...
Thanks.
Hey Drew, which lot is this in the, in the subdivision?
Should be Lot Two is what it's showing up.
So on the plat, Lot Two's shown as sixty-eight feet wide.
Sixty-eight?
Feet off of standard. I just pulled the plat up from, from...
Measured.
So that, and you're saying in city code, you gotta be at least seventy to be R-two?
Someone says you gotta be seventy.
It's a good example of what planning commissions do. They try to see if applications conform with the technical standards, and then they make a recommendation to the council on technical things, and then they let the council deal with the political side of it.
Well, what do you guys think? Opened the public hearing, nobody wanted to talk. Is the applicant here? Would you mind taking some questions? Please say your name.
Uh, Kaishen Goodspeed.
So are, this is Commissioner Anderson, so are you, do you live in one of the houses on either side? Or you're, you're planning to live in this one, or what's, like what's the?
Uh, the plan is for me and my cousin to, uh, live in the duplex, yeah.
And the, and the people to the side, that's the rest of your family?
Yeah, uh, almost that whole area is all family, except the corner house and then the Lot Three.
If I'm right, Kaishen, uh, if you and your cousin lived there, you would have your aunts on east and west of you, right?
Um, so the house at two-fifty West has been sold out of the family.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that. It's the farthest west, that's?
Uh, that's the east house.
East house, okay, so... What I understand is Kasia's house has been sold.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, that's, uh, the house I grew up in, that's my mom's old house.
Are the owners of two-fifty here?
Uh, I don't know.
What, plan for, or how to build this? I mean, especially where you're only sixty-eight feet wide. Are you planning on setting it all the way back to the back, or are you having it up close to the road?
Uh, we were just going to try to match the other homes on the street.
It should be like, what, about twenty feet wide on each one?
On each unit?
I think twenty feet wide, roughly.
Commissioner Mitchell, how far back do you anticipate going? Like, or, and maybe this is, maybe you're not there yet.
Um, I have a plan drawn, uh, we just have a patio that extends ten feet back.
Okay.
And then, uh, the rest of the lot, I'm sure will be continued to use by the family.
Got you.
So you'll have a, a front apartment and a back apartment?
Uh, it's, uh, two stories, they're side by side.
So each unit will be two stories, but they'll be side by side?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So this is Commissioner Anderson and, and the rest of the commission here, but you, I, where it doesn't meet code for R-two, and changing it to R-two and doing two duplexes, I mean, it is possible with the right architecture to make it not look super odd in that neighborhood, but it would be a challenge. I mean, easier solution would be, it's already, as it's zoned, you could build a house with a, um, an interior, interior or internal accessory dwelling unit. You could basically have two units, but then it would be legally compliant with code. You basically have one house that has a house and an accessory dwelling in it. And then you've got a lot of flexibility with how you want to do it and how you want to make it work, and it's just one house. And that way, you don't have to try and get a variance, you know, for, for the code. It's easier to sell, it's easier to, and it's going to look better with the neighborhood.
Wouldn't the, wouldn't the accessory, accessory dwelling unit have to be smaller than the main unit?
There, there are some accessory dwelling unit regulations. The state in last year's legislative session removed a lot of those. Biggest downside to an accessory, internal accessory dwelling unit is you may not be able to have separate ownership of the two units. That might be the biggest downside for them.
And that is one of our goals.
So it's really not an apartment, it's condo?
Duplex.
Duplex. Yeah, town home.
Town home.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a duplex, because a duplex would be single ownership. They're looking to make it basically a town home, a two-unit town home, like with two separate tax IDs.
You're not going to live one above and one below over each other? It's going to be still two units that are just identical?
Yeah, mirrored.
One and back, two-story, okay. Yeah, because I, I started getting concerned when we started talking about if you were going to do, uh, like a condo is, that would be, one of you live above and the other one below, that gets problematic in ownership, too, so anyway.
Or they're two feet shorter, the other two right on their setbacks? On their property line? Obviously, the one is sold.
If you saw me, I was measuring the two properties to see if they could buy two feet, but they're both at, at the minimum of, they're in an R-one-six, you have to be eight and ten, unfortunately. These are both, both there, and, and especially at two-fifty, it looks like, if they are ten on that west side, they're definitely eight over there, so they couldn't go to an eight on the west side because they already used it on the east side. And then the apartment, I mean, the home on the west, that they've, they're at basically that eight-foot mark as well, so you couldn't buy two feet from there, because that would have been an option to try to do a lot line adjustment, but neither one can get it from those.
Yeah, that west lot, had, had they planned for this at the time of subdivision, the west lot has enough width to make it all work, but with the house being on the lot line almost, it, it doesn't, that, that width isn't available here.
Meets the R-one-six, right? Because it, it's sixty-six foot, so they've got sixty-nine or sixty-eight, they're fine. But now trying to go to the R-two, the minimum is seventy, so...
Any more questions?
It's all my questions.
You guys have any more questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, it's a tough one.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I... I mean, if they want to, you know, if they want to split and do that, I mean, that's fine, but I, being planning commission, I mean, our, we don't have legislative leeway on this, you know, to grant a variance. I, I think we just recommend denial, simply on the fact that it's only sixty-eight feet, and let city council decide if they want to give a variance for it. I mean, they're the ones that have the ability to do that, not us. Doesn't mean we're denying it for any other reason, just city council's got to look at that and decide if they want to give a variance.
So on your motion, you would just state that because of the?
Recommending denial because it doesn't meet city code.
The seventy-foot, the seventy-foot distance, and they would ask? They, they would have to ask, when it goes to council, you'd just have to ask for the variance.
Yeah, and the, and the way that state land use laws work, and I don't say this to, to diminish the role of planning commission, but it goes to the, it goes to the city council no matter what your, your motion says or how you vote, right? And so, so your role is this public input, this look at the technical side of things, and then the city council will exercise the vote that determines, you know, the, the actual application of, of, uh, a, a decision to their request.
I mean, make a motion if you're ready.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to recommend denial of Z dash twenty-five dash eleven. Request to rezone approximately point three-one acres located at two-seventy-two West, two-hundred South from the current R-one-six zoning to a proposed R-two zoning designation. The reason for recommending denial is that the lot is sixty-eight feet wide and doesn't meet the seventy-foot wide requirement for R-two. And let city council decide if they want to grant a variance for that.
This is Shill, I second.
I have first from Commissioner Anderson for denial, and a second from Commissioner Schill for recommendation for denial. Uh, individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schill.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tuppo.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye. It doesn't mean you guys, this will go to city council with a recommendation for denial solely on the fact that it's not seventy feet wide. Council has the option to grant you that waiver, we, we do not. So I mean, this still goes like Thad said, so this will go to council next week? Next week, so... Thanks, guys, sorry. Item four C, Z dash twenty-five dash thirteen, a request to amend a portion of the Stukey Farms PCD, updating the name from Stukey Farms to Alea. Assigning building height to mixed uses and hospitality areas, and updating the pod numbers to match the updated site plan. The applicant is Preserve at Stukey Farms Holding LLC. We'll turn to staff, Eldon?
Thank you, commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval to amend the Stukey Farms PCD. And the proposal includes the, the following three items. These three items are the only items that they're asking to amend at this time. Item number one is updating the name from Stukey Farms to Alea. Item number two, assigning building height to the mixed use and hospitality areas. And with those heights, they're asking for sixty feet in the condo, tell, and hotel zone. When we look at those heights there, current city code is forty-five, they're asking for sixty feet. I went back and looked at the past couple height variances that were approved. We've got seventy North Green Springs, there's that Hilton there behind the Maverick that's currently being constructed. That was approved for fifty-eight feet. And then looking to exit thirteen, there's a second hotel there that has not been built. And that was approved at sixty-five feet. So that sixty-foot ask is in line with what we've approved in the past. And they're asking for fifty feet of commercial and professional office. Again, city code's forty-five, they're asking for fifty. If we turn our attention to Merrill Road and Sandia, that three-story office building that's built on the corner there, they came in and asked for a variance of fifty-six feet. So just to kind of compare those, again, that's in line with that type of use and, and the building that it's bringing. And then for residential, they're asking to go up to forty feet, uh, current city code's thirty-five. And then item number three is updating the pod numbers in the zoning comparison chart to match the updated site plan. Staff has no concerns with the proposed zone change as outlined. Staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash twenty-five dash thirteen for the zone change request, amending the name from Stukey Farms to Alea, assigning building heights to the mixed use and hospitality area, and updating the pod numbers to match the updated site plan. And this goes on to city council, based on the findings and conditions stated in the report. And I, I read through a, a few comments that, that came in, I read through them all, but just wanted to point out, this height only addresses the commercial areas and the mixed use. Some of the comments referenced POD twelve A, you know, getting into some sixty-foot heights there, fifty-foot heights, POD twelve A, if, if this is approved tonight, they would only be allowed to go to forty feet, which is stated in that zoning comparison chart right there. I just want to focus our attention into the areas that they're asking for that in increased height. I'm happy to answer any, any questions you may have at this time.
So like in POD twelve A, that, they just stay at the normal city ones, is that what you were saying? On that, was, sorry, I'm, I'm looking for the medium and high density is twelve A, right?
Correct.
And that's not, is that one of the mixed use where they're asking for the height variance?
No, that twelve A is specifically spelled out at thirty-five feet. No, that 12A is specifically spelled out at 35 feet.
The other?
The, the residential areas in the mixed use and commercial are, they're asking to go to 40.
The height will change in 13 that you see on the screen, which is the intersection basically Warner Valley Road and Washington Fields Road in pod 14. And in the hospitality area, number 28, which is where the hotel resort is, is a proposal to go there. So that's, that's the ones that'll have the new height.
Those three.
Those three villages according to the request, is that right, Eldon?
It was 18 and 19 included in that.
See what we got here.
If you go, if you go back to the chart.
Yeah, it's eight, so right, you can see it, so it's in the hospitality and in the commercial. So you're looking at oh, the mixed use is what we're doing, yeah.
The chart is what is current and what's on the sheet is what they're proposing. Changing from the chart to the 60, 50, 40.
What you see on this chart in your packet is what they're proposing.
What they're, okay.
Yes, this is what they would be. So let's just go down here in the commercial in pods 18, 19. It would be 35 to 50. So I would just say it's a 50 in the commercial right now in the city. 45 is our standard in commercial, so they're asking for five feet above that. In those, in pods 18, 19. Pod 28, they're asking to be able to go to 60, 50, 50 and 40 depending on if it's the condo tell and hotel, commercial, professional office space. But any residential in the hospitality would be at 40 would be the max.
Yeah, sorry, when I first looked at that, I was looking at the Washington City numbers and not the.
Yeah, those are what our city, that's why they put these in here for you to compare what we do currently, and so this is what they're asking above it. And then going to again, the mixed use, which is 12B, 13, 14 and 26. That's when these come in at 50, 50, 50 and 40. And then you can see the comparison is they're asking for five more basically as an average along any of those same uses. Does that help?
Just, just to make it clear, no residential areas, they're, they're not asking for an increase in height to any of the, the, the single family areas. That, that'll be 35 feet.
I'd like to give a little legal context. Usually in straight zoned areas, we don't get involved with these numbers, they're just codified and then staff applies the code to the plans as they come. But in PCDs and PUDs, in the planned, planned unit zone designations, this type of attention to detail is attached to the zoning decision. So that's why tonight's, tonight's item is titled a zone change request, and it's because in this type of a planned development, the city council gets to have that level of, that degree of, of detail related to the zone change designation. And so you'll see that's why city councils like planned zoning is it, it really vests them in a lot more detail than they would have on a straight zone. And so it really is just a zone change tonight, and the zone change is to change some of these details that are, that they're proposing or asking for some difference from the original vesting.
So question I have is this 50 feet and this 60 feet, does that include the Mansard walls to, to hide the HBAC and, and the equipment? Parapet wall or whatever?
Generally what we say is whatever the finished grade is to the highest point, whatever it may be. If they had a weather vane up there with a little chicken on top, it'd be to the top of that, that chicken. That's just the simplest way I can keep it. Whatever the highest point is, that's the limit and they have to work within that.
But we usually don't have much argument on the highest point. Where, where it gets into some the art of science or the science of art is determining what the grade level is, you know, a lot, if there's a lot that's got a, a, a changing slope. There's even standards for that, but usually the question is where do we start measuring? A neighbor down slope almost never agrees with the city as to where you should start measuring, and that's because they're, they're downhill looking up at it and it just looks bigger than it might, might measure. But yeah, usually the, the more difficult determination is the measurement that we start from.
On those, on all those other ones that we granted waivers on, they had to come in and apply for a conditional use permit to extend it past that. Correct? For all the height waivers. So by doing this, we're just waiving that conditional use permit even in the commercial zoning, so we're not going to know what any of these buildings look like, how tall, what it's going to look like that tall.
The zoning still allows your, your village specific designs to be reviewed by the city council. What we're saying is within these, again, they're just areas right now, they're really just identified by colors. The standard, the codified standard is not code based, it's zoning decision based. And so you're right, that would, that would remove these areas from needing to submit a conditional use permit. It wouldn't remove the city council from still being just as involved in site planning as planned developments allow them to be. So the city council will still have a lot of, a lot of chance to review and, and provide their input on it.
Because are they going to see what the buildings come in that look like where this is a PUD or PCD? Or whatever, I'm sorry, whatever it is.
CD, and, and the city council will get to see, you know, village specifics, designs and, and site plan and all that.
I mean, that's why we do all this, so we get to see everything, but we don't, we'll actually get to see it too when it comes in with the height variance, whether we want to. Correct?
Well, there won't be a height question, I mean, as long as they follow the standard.
Question if we, if we say yes tonight.
You'll get to see it at plating.
We'll get to see what it looks like and all of that.
Yeah.
But ju, but just to be clear, would we be able to rescind the height variance at that point?
No, so this is a, this is a zone change. So if you, if you, if you recommend it or if you deny it, and then the city council were to approve this, that would be a vested zone zoning right in the areas that it applies to. At plating, if this was just a traditionally zoned area, they would just need to show us where the lot boundaries are. But in planned developments, they, they, the city council and staff get to require that they show you a lot more. You know, front and side look and feel and design and styling and all of those things that, that you get into. And so if, if it were to be approved by the city council, it couldn't be rescinded unless the applicant came and, you know, volunteered it up, essentially changed the zone to remove that. And so they would have that as a height limitation, but they're still going to have to comply with all of the planned development requirements that, that are baked into the benefit of planned developments. They're still going to have to do all those things as they move forward.
And if, and if we denied it, they, and they wanted to come in for a variance, because they wouldn't need a conditional use, we'd have to change the PCD again. We'd have to amend the PCD to have the 60 foot tall, correct?
So if the city council were to deny it and they still wanted to go to heights in excess of what's already allowed in that zone, they would need to actually submit for a variance to the zoning rules. And so the city council would need to have a variance hearing and decide whether they, they were to approve it and it would come on an individual case by case basis. My assumption is if they don't get approved, they're probably not going to plan for those heights, they'll plan for the heights that are, that are already allowed within the zone. And so I, I would say this is they're, they're kind of projecting longer term planning out. And I, I don't think they have any sites designed or buildings designed, but they're thinking it would be nice to maybe be able to design those a little higher than what the current standards are. So they're trying to see, you know, what the city council would, would allow in those areas that they've designated. But yeah, if it, if it doesn't get approved, I'm sure they have fallback plans to design it according to the heights that are there right now.
So if it gets approved tonight, all of the variances that they're proposing on this graph would have to be, we would be approving those variants.
You would be recommending to the city council.
Getting approval.
Correct.
Even though we just declined one for a two foot shortage.
You declined a height variance for a two foot shortage in.
With.
In. Variance, yeah.
But that's a straight zoning that didn't meet the straight zoning.
Yeah.
So they're, they're different, that's why they're at this stage.
This one, you're hearing this, this one sounds a lot like the height, height variance. But this is a zone change application. They're asking the council to way out ahead of their planning to give them a different, a different measurement of height requirement. And, and that's not unheard of, it's not something that, that strikes staff as unusual. And in fact, from a planning standpoint, appreciate knowing, you know, from, from a longer view forward, what that standard's supposed to be when the plans start coming in.
There's a site setbacks too, not just the height.
Correct. Tonight's a name change, a side yard, a setback and a height variance. Those are all really technical details that aren't contained in traditional zoning approvals, but are contained in planned development approvals.
Commissioner, those site setbacks were previously approved. Those were a couple meetings ago that, that we should have addressed this all at once, just the timing of things, they, they needed approval on those site setbacks and weren't quite, quite yet ready to see this through, so. I know it seems like you've, you've seen this project many times, which you have. I know the applicant and their team, they're, they're hoping this is the last time.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I just want to make, we were handed comments late today that we weren't able to review, but as I read through that and it pertains to this partial, I don't see that the comments that were made applied to the, has anybody else looked at that and?
I didn't see it.
This is the comments that we just got and they're talking about roads and different things. I just felt like I should mention that, hey, we do have that comment, but I don't feel that it applies to the change that's taking place.
I think some of the ones that came in late were pointing to 12A.
Right, is that the ones you're kind of referencing?
Says, yeah, Z-25-13, yeah, they're, well, partial 18, 19. But yeah, it came in pretty late, so we were just as the meeting started and I was just going down through it, realizing that it applied to this.
Thad could speak to that?
I don't think you heard you.
Pardon me, Thad. You could. Question with.
Well, yeah, and so the comment that was made on this item were handed just before the meeting that came in kind of late. I just want to make sure, because as I read through their comments, it doesn't, I feel it doesn't apply to what their request, like the request that's.
Correct, so this, this comment's from a gardener family who there's one, there's one parcel of land within the Stukey Farm PCD now, Aleah, if it gets approved, that is privately owned, that the prior developers sold before they sold all their development rights to the new developer, it's right around that, that 18. There is no record in the public record, the city had no, no knowledge from the selling developer, the buying developer or the county record that there was any option or future right to buy additional acreage there. So after the city council considered and, and made a, an amendment to the site plan, the gardener's family attorney contacted me, I've had correspondence with them in email and in phone calls. The gardeners have not produced any document to the city to, to validate their claim, but I, I believe the gardeners and their attorneys, I don't think they're lying to us. But what I understand they have is, or claim to have is a future option to buy more acreage. But even still, if it's a future option to buy more acreage, I, I don't know that the city would recognize it as a right until they've exercised that option. If they do exercise that option and if it, if it conflicts with the location of the fire parcel, the city would lean on the, the new developers to relocate that find a spot within any of those other areas that would work for a fire station. And so, so we think it's mostly a conflict between the gardeners and the new developers. And we think we've got plenty of future opportunities to use that as leverage. If that becomes a problem, that the fire station can't be located there, we would use, you know, our legislative process to make them relocate that fire, fire station somewhere else.
But I guess again, this, that doesn't necessarily apply to.
Correct, I'm not going to say it's irrelevant, but it doesn't apply to this own change. There's nothing of this own change that, whether we agreed with the gardeners entirely or didn't, in their letter, they're asking the planning commission to, you know, set, set timeframes and phases at when roads are supposed to be built and the planning commission doesn't do that for anybody. And, and so, yeah, I, I acknowledge their, their right of a claim of a future right to purchase something there, but I don't, I don't think it has any bearing on the, on the item tonight.
So your little conference that you had, you talked about flight path and, and ceiling height for.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so about 10 years ago, the prior developer that sold to the current owners, they bought a bunch of acreage at, at, from the Stukey Farm development. And they, they bought the acreage that perfectly aligned with the end of the runway. And so now St. George City owns the runway as well as the runway protection area, which is an area that you're not allowed to have structures or public in. So the area that now remains is what's called the runway influence area, which is kind of section nine and 28 there, it ends right around where the lakes begin. And there is a height restriction in federal aviation FAA regulations, but it starts at 200 feet. And so it's not even anything remotely near what, our, our, our height restrictions are far more severe than that already. And so, so yeah, we're not worried about the FAA height restrictions there. We, we have worked with the airport and we are trying to make sure that, you know, that the bodies of water there, one of the reasons why there was some support to convert them to, you know, you know, public use type bodies of water instead of just ponds and lagoons like they're originally vested for is the original vestings might have fostered like waterfall populations that might have been a concern near a runway. And they think that with these being pools and, you know, bodies of water maintained for public use, there's less likelihood of that. And so, so there is a height restriction there, but it's the F, the federal restriction's much more generous than Washington City.
Thanks, Eldon. Is there any more questions or? You guys ready for me to open up this public hearing? All right, this is, we'll open up the public hearing portion of this. I'm assuming most of you guys are here for this one and our next one. Like Thad was saying, this is a zone, we don't know what's going in. It's just a zone change for the request to have it on those certain locations that we talked about earlier. The comments that were submitted have been read to us and are on record. So if you would like to speak to this, please come, do so. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, make sure you state your name for the record. And whoever's ready to talk, please come up.
Hi, my name's Michelle Harris and I'm reading this on behalf of Jen and Greg Malmberg, who live in the community there but are unable to attend tonight. After reviewing the law requiring governing variances in the state of Utah, that they are based on one hardship which cannot be financial and two, unique circumstances. I find it difficult to believe true burden of truth is substantially enough to illustrate a hardship and unique circumstances. As such, we behoove this governing body to deny the variance based upon the laws governing variances in the state of Utah. And I'm also a resident in the Stukey Farms development. And if it's so easy for them to just fall back and go back to their original heights, I say let's just do that. I mean, we were already here at the city council or meeting with you guys on a home builder that was exceeding his 35 foot height. And we went out of that with a win. And I mean, you can't just start something and then ask for forgiveness later and you've gone above what your heights are. From our understanding as homeowners there, this thing that they want to raise from 45 feet to 60 feet is going to be five houses down from us. So, you know, we're on to the second developer for this community. And we bought into a dream of what the original developer had and those have all changed. We got a new developer in there now that wants to add possibly another floor. in there now that wants to add possibly another floor to a hotel. And it's not the, the look that we want to have when we are out sitting on our front porch.
Thank you. Commissioners, I, just the, the comments seem to understand that this was a variance. And I'll just state it again. This is a zone change. It's not, a variance is a request to a legislative body to approve something, even though it doesn't conform to the, to the codified standard. This one is a zone change request, which is essentially asking the legislative body to change the standard. In, in planned developments, the standard is contained in the zone change decision itself.
With that being said, didn't you mention earlier that if it is approved, then there's no going back on then denying them? Or there is?
If the city council.
If you approve it tonight.
Tonight, there's no approval, ma'am. If the city council were to receive this recommendation and decide to approve it, the height that they designate in that approval cannot be rescinded by the city. That, that would be.
Why would we approve it?
Let me finish. I let you finish. Let me finish. Okay? When the city council approves that, it becomes a law, a zoning law approved by the legislative body of the city. So no staff member can rescind it. The city council can't rescind it because under Utah law on zoning laws, the landowner gets to rely on that standard. And so the only way it would be changed is if the landowner were to submit an application and ask that it be changed.
And would there be another meeting for?
There's always meetings on zone changes. Yes. Now, the city council might choose to deny it, and then the landowner would not have an approval for anything above and beyond the current standard.
Gotcha. Great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Gary Smith, live in Stuki Farms also. Um, and we also have some relatives that live in Warner Gateway. So admittedly, we did not attend the previous meeting when the setbacks were changed, which also increased population growth in the area, traffic, water impact, other impacts also. So we've never seen the impact studies. Uh, secondly, with the recent changes of the Community Association Act, um, the HOAs, et cetera, have less capability of enforcing certain rules such as parking. Um, we can't enforce any more rules on parking, for example. So if someone is at the condo hotel, hotel, et cetera, want to park just up the street to, on Prairie Way or whatever way, we can no longer control those. Um, so we are strongly encouraging that this commission does not approve the zone change.
Thank you.
Public's Martin Dale from Crossroads. Um, my only thing is I would like you to consider that if you lived, uh, in the present Stuki Farms, what you want is? And the reason we say that is the last time we were here, a lot of the work in the original part of the Stuki Farm has never been finished. And so it's kind of like we've been forgotten about, and now they're just, you know, going on and forgetting about us. And the other thing is, is, uh, how much is the amount of people in an area going to change? Is it going to change?
Are you asking density increases? Is that what you're saying?
Density, yeah.
The density of residential units? Um, the original, so this has been a fun history because a couple of years ago, all of you showed up mad at your original developer. You'll remember that. And then you guys had some meetings and then.
Well, I, I, I take exception to that comment, but go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, that was just my perception. And now the new developers making some changes. And, and I, I was going to applaud you for coming and expressing your opinion every time because you have that right. That's, a lot of times, city councils don't know that unless you do come. So all I'm saying is you folks are living the public process. The state of Utah requires Washington City to hold these hearings and you folks are fulfilling that. So I was going to applaud you for that. The original developer had an original density that was, I don't even remember the number, but there was an additional 30 acres where the, which got sold to St. George for the runway. And then on the north side of the ridge, there was another 18 acres. So those things got removed. When you removed all those, the density that remained for this area was 1,887 residential units. And they've got, they have received a preliminary increase from the city council to, I believe, 2,100 something. I can't remember the exact number. And so it has been approved for a, for a slight increase. Um, on the basis that going from an, a, a development of entirely estate lots to developments that have smaller lots with homes that fit more residential units. And so, um, it has been approved for, for a density increase.
Is it going to increase again with this?
So the density increase will have to come back through the city council. It, that also is a, an element of the zoning approval.
Okay. Again, if you live there, what would you want? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Georgia Wilson. Um, we live at Stuki Farms in the Meadows. Oh, Stuki Farm in the Meadows. And we've been there nine years. And I know the ones that we bought in with, um, at the Stuki Farm, he had a dream and it became our nightmare. And, you know, when we went to look at the land to build a home, we were just there, looked and everything. There is such, I mean, on paper, that looks fine. Go out there and not just one night, but several nights, different times of the year. There is so much wind and it's frightening to have buildings that tall. And you're going to have lives when that plane crashes in there from the winds, you know? When we bought in, and everybody's voice should be heard and hopefully others will come up and, and also add to it. But when we bought in, it was supposed to be different than what we're looking at now. And like I said, we thought it was a family place. And now we're looking at hotels. There are streets, there's no lights. There is just, you know, traffic and it's just growing so fast. And it's like, when is it going to stop? When are we going to stop wasting water and all the other things? I mean, there's so much to a picture. And it's like, you know, yeah, my voice might not be needed to be heard tonight, but like you say, things are going to change and then it's going to be too late to speak up. So I just wish everybody would go out and see how much wind is at night. We've been trying to get a stop sign on the corner for nine years and we can't get a stop sign. And people fly in and out and everything. And like I said, we've got these planes that are, they come in. We've already had a plane crash since we've lived here. And when you put those high buildings, people's lives are at stake. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Frank Pyon and I am a resident of Stuki Farms. Uh, I would like to see Washington City stay with the original height requirements. Uh, I do think it, it's not fair that we purchase a home for a retirement community. And these type of buildings are being built. Uh, can't stop the buildings from being built, but I, I would like to think that maybe you guys could control the height of these buildings. I think the traffic, the congestion is, is going to be major issues, especially on Washington Fields. Uh, and especially for the people who live right on Washington Fields. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. If we close the public hearing, that's it. So. That will conclude our portion of the public hearing for tonight. We will close that on item. On, on this item, on item 4C. What does commissioners have to say?
So this is Commissioner Mitchell, and this may just be my confusion, but I, I'd like to go back to that chart. I wish the chart would kind of highlight the, the change. But Drew, could you pull that back up? Let's just maybe clarify what heights we're adjusting and what they're adjusting from to. I've got the form in front of me, the 60, 50, 40, but maybe if you could refresh me on what they're currently. 45, 35. Thanks.
Yeah. The biggest jumpers are the con, condo, condo tell and hotel. So that's, you know, right now, anything in a commercial zone, um, like that, it's 45 feet. They're asking for 60. Um, Eldon gave you a few examples of what the city's already passed throughout the city. And every hotel's come in and asked for a height waiver. And they've all received them at 60 to 65.
Does your, does your cursor maybe select that, that cell so they can see it? Or you just got to move on it there? Okay. Yeah. Just, you'll see the 60, 45 is what's approved in condo tell and hotel currently, what is requested. And you'll notice that it doesn't, 60 isn't found in any of the residential neighborhoods. It's, it's in the commercial or the hospitality zones.
Anything in these mixed use zones, it does say residential, it's going to be, um, in a mixed use commercial setting. Um, so they're just saying any residential found in that commercial mixed use setting will still only have a maximum of 40 feet. And that's it. That would be in, in these ones, this mixed use zones are basically 12B, 13, 14, and 26.
So really in my mind, I'm visualizing potentially an additional floor. You know, if you're adjusting a commercial building 15 feet, you're only going to get one extra layer. You're not getting two.
Yeah. And so most of these, you know, barring the, the condo tell and hotel, those are the ones that are asking for the biggest jump. The other ones are a five foot jump above what the city is. And they're just wanting those as the standard to be able to design, come in, when they do come in for your condition of use permit, that they fit within those parameters. You're just looking at how the parking's going, the landscaping and the look of the building. Right? And so that's what that would do. So those are the ones that, if anything stands out, it would be those 60s. And again, I'm not trying to make them better. I'm just saying that other people have come in at exit 13, at exit 10, and other places within the city of those kinds of hotel uses and have received height waivers of 60 to 65, you know? Eldon, that's why I put in the report just to let you know, that's what the city council has approved for that, that kind of a use and other places, because most of them come in asking for that. Um, but all the others are a five foot jump from the, the standard. And again, which is not uncommon in a PCD, whether it be our city or any other city, this is that zone where cities look at it. And, you know, they, they, they're grateful to know what they're getting over a 200 plus acre area. So they're willing to give some concessions on certain things. Um, and again, that's what PCDs are, are designed for.
Yeah. And let me just make one other comment, just from my personal thoughts, like individual commented about the airplane and the, um, I mean, I can see that being a potential, but I think, you know, because of the extra height that adds, you know, to that possibility. But when you're a certain height and you're on the ground, your visibility is not going to change that much from an extra floor on a building. Um, and that's just me, you know, thinking out loud. You know, it does add height. So, you know, if there's a concern about air, airplanes, you're 15 more feet in the air. But from the ground, looking at a building that's, you know, 45 feet versus 60. And maybe it does block your view of something, but the density, I think is obviously that does change. If you're adding a floor to a building, you're increasing density. Um, but they have their numbers that they have to stay within regardless of the height of the buildings.
And this is Shiel. I, I think it's just unfortunate that, uh, you know, the early people bought in a long time ago and it's changed hands a few times. Who knows if it's going to change hands again. And everybody has a whole new plan, whole new idea. And, and I, I just think it's unfortunate. Uh, when, when they buy the property, they, they know what they're buying, but now they're trying to change it. And, and do we want to go along with that? Are they really going to build a 60, uh, foot hotel? Is that really going to come? I don't know. Uh, you know, there's some commercial that needs to happen out there, but, but do we really need to cave to that today? I, I don't know. I, I'm ju, I feel sorry for the residents that are there because they're going through hell and they have, but, uh, because they're being forgotten and, and it's not being finished where they are. So I don't know how we curb that and help them and help the new owners. I think I brought this up last time, a long time ago, about getting in and cleaning, cleaning up some of the debris and some of the, the broken concrete. Uh, and I don't know that they've even done that when they came in for all their grand old plan of a, of a water park.
So. Commissioner Tuppo, um, I just feel like where the, the hospitality is located in proximity to the very low density lots, I don't think a 60 foot is actually appropriate for that area. 45 is fine, but an extra floor is going to make a huge difference when it's located right next to a very low dense area.
Well, we, we just talked about economics of, of a building and, and we feel like residential's fine at 35, commercial's fine at 45. If they go on a, on a hotel, uh, they have different regulations as far as fire, uh, prevention and, and, uh, fire systems in it and, and to pay those and ho, and elevator costs, they got to go up to, to five, six stories. Uh, four stories isn't enough. Three stories is when it starts changing, but you, four stories is, is, uh, is a, a death sentence. They got to go to six, you know, five, six stories to make it pencil. So that's why they need additional footage on, on a hotel.
Almost every hotel that's been built in our city in the last 10 years had to come in and get a height variance. And, and they, I don't think they're represented by Commissioner Shiel, but they had similar statements. Love to build, we'd love to build a hotel in your city. We need a height variance to make it work. Um, the, and we, I think we've had neighbors o, object to that at probably about every single one of those two. Yeah. The hotels that exist now, if you look at Stills and Greenspring, every one of those have received.
This is Commissioner Mitchell too, and I want to make this comment, but I, in order for this to change its current situation, something's got to happen, right? So until it works for a, for a developer to come in and do what they need to do, it's going to continue to be the disaster that it currently is. Unless something happens or.
So we understand that they have cleaned, they've worked on a lot of the complaints that existed with the prior developer. Um, part of the transaction, the prior developer did retain some lots. And so that developer still is, got authority over s, a small portion that remains. But city staff and the city council have asked the, the new developer to take heed of the complaints and to start doing that. And, and we understand that they have. We understand that they've done more than the prior developer has done. Um, there are plans on some of the major roadways. They're, they're wanting to design and kind of give that a facelift that's consistent with their branding, if you will. And so they haven't made massive changes until they're, until they're coming in to do the other massive type of lifts for the different roadways. Understand, and we've asked them to, to heed those complaints and, and they've told us they've tried.
This is Commissioner Davis. Uh, new standards. Polish standards. My take on this is, you know, we. Village standards. My take on this is, you know, we get to the hotel, you can address the hotel. If a variance is required, a variance is required, but to me, it feels like, you know, they're looking for blanket approval across the board for, you know, multiple, multiple different projects, buildings, and to me, it just feels, you know, a little bit premature.
And that's the hard part about being so zone, the PCD, is that we do see everything, but we don't, I guess. I mean, because, I mean, you got the Southern Parkway right there. I don't think it's a great idea to have him in twelve, a sixty-foot building in twelve B, but in thirteen and fourteen, if it's up against the freeway, it's for a hotel, I mean, it's a good idea. You're next to the freeway. You know, I mean, the stuff down by the low-density lots, the very low-density estate lots, I'm assuming? What was planned there before? I mean, was it all supposed to be that way? I can't remember.
No, it had commercial as well. This site plan is a little more detailed than the previous site plan. But the previous site plan had commercial areas. It had, the one thing that this has a lot less of is it had lots and lots of open space. And so one way that they're accomplishing what they're doing is there is less open space. But as far as the use types, the only use type that's new on here is the hospitality. That's a new use type, but all the others existed on the prior plan. The prior approval.
The hospitality one, when it was Stewki Farms, it was, what was it before?
There wasn't the hospitality label. It was either labeled residential, medium-density, low-density, or commercial. It was just one of the others, one of the other labels that the prior site plan would have had.
But I guess that's what I'm asking, is that twenty-eight, what was it, what was in that area right there?
We can pull it up. Even the lakes are in different locations, so I don't know, and the site plan is altered. Drew, do you have that prior approval, or do I need to see if I can?
I don't have that on my.
Okay, I'll ask IT to allow me to airplay, and then I'll go get it.
But my run is just to help you. The water was spread out. There was like three lakes down there in a recreation area. They thought they might do ball fields and everything, which never came to fruition.
I was just curious, because Commissioner Tuppo asked, said it's, you know, a hospitality area right there next to the low-density, but what was there before?
I'll show you what we got.
And is there anything in that area nine right now? There's nothing in it, right?
I'm on, oh boy, where did it go? So the one thing that's different is the current site plan is this, but rotated forty-five degrees? Ninety degrees? Thank you, Brandy. This one is more of the north-south. This is Fields Road that comes right down the middle of it. This hashing is the airport influence area. So the hospitality that you see on today's map is right around in this area.
Where Village twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three is a hospitality area.
And so the next question for you commissioners, what do those colors mean? The blue is water. The dark green is recreation farmhouse, barn, or park. The light green is common area. The village four is medium-density. That's the most recent of the original, but the original was amended many times over its twelve or so years with the prior developer.
So Village twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three were what? Sorry, I can't see.
Those green hues indicate various types of open space slash common area. Most likely, they would be open space owned and maintained by the HOAs.
So what was Village nine, the gray?
Village nine, let me find it here. Village nine is that tan color. That's very low-density.
Stays the same. That gray. Village sixteen and fifteen were the commercial.
So that, my question, I guess, would be, I mean, I know tonight's meeting is just about these heights. The highest standards for the zone, but at what point did parks and open space become hotel and hospitality, commercial? So there is a, there was a site plan agreement between the developer and the city council. Because this was a development agreement, the development agreement has certain processes for site plan changes. And so it basically became a different process than the traditional state law-based process for new entitlements. And so pursuant to the development agreement, the applicant and the city council made an agreement on a new site plan, which is the one you saw before this, and so that's when some of those changes happened. So did we relocate any of these parks and open spaces, or they just went away in exchange for? Well, there's, well, we have to go to the other map. There's still open space on the other one. There were concessions. The developer agreed to produce fewer lakes, fewer acreages of lakes than they had originally invested to do. They agreed to produce for public open space. One of the problems of the original development agreement is it didn't say that the open space had to be public. If anything, the language suggested that it would be open to the HOA members, but not the public. And so there is a negotiation to obtain for Washington City ten acres of a public park space, as well as two acres of a fire space, and then you'll see the other parks that are put in there. So there was a reduction in the open space, but there was also a corresponding benefit in the nature of the space that would be built and remained. It could have been that the open space in the prior map or the prior site plan would have been open, but also undeveloped. It didn't have to be a park. It didn't have to be an amenity. It just was essentially non-build areas. And so one of the things that the site plan discussion accomplished was greater definition on things like that. Show you this right now? You want this back on the monitor? So I'll tell you. So the original site plan had a total open space of plus or minus eighty-five acres. This one has, sorry, I misspoke there. Had a total project area of five hundred and sixteen total acres. Six hundred and sixteen. The new one is down to five hundred and sixty-seven. That just correlates to the acreages that have been removed. The original one had a total of, I'm just doing a little math here as I go. Of common open space. So just the open space that would have been common area was a hundred and thirty acres, and the new one has eighty-four acres of common open space. The original one had sixteen-point-three acres of parks. The modern one now has twenty-one-point-five acres of parks. The original one had sixteen-point-three acres of ball fields. This one now has eleven-point-five acres of fire station, farmhouse, and church. And so the ball fields have essentially been replaced by the regional park, the ten-acre park. The original one had twenty-five acres of lakes. This one has eighteen. And so the biggest variance is in what we call the common open space, which is raw land likely to be common area within the various HOAs that are established to run these different communities. So we didn't necessarily lose any parks. We lost non-developed land. I guess that's the better way to put it, right? Yeah, if anything, we gained at least a guarantee of two parks that'll be publicly accessible and available. And then they gained a new label hospitality. The city was able to gain a reduction in the total water usage from twenty-five down to eighteen. And their site-specific planning still has a lot of common-type areas. It's things like pickleball courts and walkways and different things that are part of the community. And so it's likely that all of those areas will be finished with some type of a finish that's related to the community that it's in. And so, yeah, it's a modernization of the original concept. And I don't know if it was Commissioner Bullock, but yeah, that's not the agenda item tonight either. It's just a report on how you got to the site plan.
Yeah, we got sidetracked there. I didn't mean to go that far. I was just curious.
This is Commissioner Anderson. Even though it's not the agenda item, I think it's relevant, but you know, people were originally planning on having, you know, a hotel, particularly up near thirteen, fourteen, somewhere in that vicinity. The hospitality area, even though, you know, we've heard the reasons for why, you know, that has transpired, and even if there are good reasons, it still puts, you know, a hotel right next to some of these estate lots, which I think that's the bigger problem, especially when it's a hotel that wasn't going to be there. I mean, where you got a hotel that was always going to be there, that's one thing, and a new hotel, that's a whole lot a lot more difficult pill to swallow. I think I think in the hospitality zone, I mean, I think the city, I think the current, I don't know the city, but the current standards are sufficient. I especially think, I mean, in either zone, I don't think the residential needs to be above thirty feet, thirty-five feet. Even if you're building three-story townhomes, you can still build them in thirty-five feet. So it's still possible to do, you know, whatever it is that they want to put in there. Forty-five feet, you can still build commercial and professional offices in either one. A forty-five-foot height on hotel is super restrictive and not very feasible. I mean, what Commissioner Shiel is saying is right. I mean, if, when you go to four stories, you incur a ton of cost without much return on it, and that's why most hotels, you got to be at least five stories to be able to make it, make a pencil, and I get that, which is why every hotel comes and asks for variance all the time, because you just, you can't make a pencil very well at forty-five feet. But I also think the only place that you could you could deal with a sixty-foot, a sixty-foot hotel would be in the mixed-use area, you know, up around thirteen, fourteen. All right. I'm of the opinion that we leave everything as is. The only thing I think we should be entertaining is maybe a sixty-foot height in that mixed use for the hotel, because it was already going to be a hotel there.
So I do need to add to my prior comments. The mixed-use area also is a new label that wasn't on the prior one. They didn't ever call anything mixed use. So hospitality and mixed use need some designations, because those are new areas. They add what was called commercial, and hotels can go in commercial, yeah. And so I think your role tonight is to give the council a recommendation as to what you view on it. They'll get to wrestle with the spreadsheet, and somebody's going to need to determine what those numbers ultimately are, but that's not what your motion would be tonight. Commissioner Davis mentioned, you know, I feel like they can just bring it in on a job-by-job basis, and that's a great recommendation, if that's what the commission feels is relevant. And so I think, yeah, we don't need to get into the spreadsheet and start writing what those should be. We just need to have you guys pass something to the council to consider when they make a decision.
Well, I would, that goes back to the original question I had, is case-by-case basis, but we'd have to do an amendment to this PCD every time instead of a conditional use, right?
So if you don't give them sixty feet, they either have to bring in a zone change for each one they want to go over, or a, Drew, you were...
Well, if you're dealing and you're only talking height, they can ask for a height waiver on every one of them. And that's what the, and you won't see those, and specifically just for the city council to do height waivers. So that's all you're saying, is you're just going to make them go through this thing? And again, I'm not trying to sway you, but they, every hotel that's coming for them, they've not denied one of them. Just for the food for thought. I'm just, you guys make your decisions.
I was under the impression that they couldn't ask for a height waiver.
That's what the process would be is a height waiver, if that's what, and, you know, they go to city council on those.
And they go to city council, but that doesn't get notified to the residents, is that right?
No, they've been making them public hearings, but only so many feet. It would not go to everybody in the whole, you know, development, Alaya Development or, you know, whatever it is. They would not go to everybody in there. It would just be like anywhere else, it's within three hundred feet.
You guys have questions for the applicant? Does the applicant want to speak? I thought so.
Yeah, I can tell by my eyes. Brandy Walker with Civil Science representing the applicant tonight. I just wanted to shed a little bit of clarity on it, because we understand, just looking at paper, to see Village nine with a very low-density use adjacent to the new hospitality zoning does fill out of place. But to be noted, there is no existing residence currently around that hospitality zone. So the closest residence would be along that north border over at Homesteads and to the far north of five and ten. So the new developer, the applicant here tonight, has master-planned the best that they can predict, right? But we've done a mass grading plan, and to put it into perspective, on the hospitality, there's a hundred and twenty feet in vertical elevation change from where you're down by the recreational lagoon to the top of the mountain on nine. So those lots, they're large estate lots with the intention of looking down on that hospitality as actually an amenity. It's going to be beautiful. So that mountain terrace is down a hundred and twenty feet. So even then, those lots are well, well above a sixty-foot-tall hotel.
Where's the current residents that are here?
I'm going to yell that, so I'm going to walk away from the mic and point.
Okay.
Right there, yeah. So, I mean, these guys are very sensitive to the fact of what's existing, but they're building something new around the areas that's not trying to impact, you know, current residents. So they're the ones putting the very low-density adjacent to the hospitality zone. And I like the height, too, would be tucked in against the ridge line there. It's down below it, so it's not aggressive. And, you know, the runway is approximately, I should know offhand, I think it's almost two hundred feet vertically above the hospitality zone there. So, you know, the flight patterns on the other way.
Where's visionary going out here?
So the six and eight, it's lightly shaded in there. You can see the lot layout. They're vested right there on both of those, that portion, Drew, and that, yep. That's what they're currently building right now.
Brandy, is it correct that where the lakes are is the lowest elevation of the project?
Yeah, well, yeah, the roundabout, actually.
It's the lowest?
The Grove Parkway is, yep, is the lowest. I mean, ideally, we want it to be our lakes for, you know, but, yeah. The stormwater lakes around four is really the lowest point of the project there, the regional detention basins, yep. And then the highest point of the project is right down there on the corner of seventeen and nine. Right there, yeah. They envision those lots like big, beautiful estate lots. They're trying to get, you know, affordable product with bigger homes down in the valley area where visionary is at. We're just trying not to burden you guys with every building.
Any of my math need to be corrected by you?
No, you did good. You did great.
Thank you. Yeah, if you can, the motion, someone would like to make it. My opinion is you leave twelve B alone, thirteen, fourteen, twenty-eight, seven, eighteen, and nineteen. Not seven, eighteen and nineteen would be fine. Five feet's not much. I mean, that's that's your parapet wall covering your that's the parapet wall covering up the HVAC units on top of the building. So.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I, I think that the, I think the sixty-foot for the hotels is, is reasonable with how you have to build hotels, and, and having the elevation change, I mean, helps at least for nine and ten, but, but I still think that the other, the others, the commercial and professional can still be done with the city standards at forty-five and the, and that, I guess, the, the current standard. And that the residential can still, should still be kept at thirty-five.
So based on that, can we dissect this, or is it accept or deny based on what's come, and if we deny it,
we can...
Everybody would, if they deny us, or deny us well, then it...
Better to recommend denial and just...
Well, I, well, this is going to the city council no matter what you do. This is your opportunity as citizen planners to let the city council know of your concerns, so I'd say make a motion, and whether you think a denial catches their attention, really what I think, that your opportunity here is to let them know of your concerns and hope that they hear those as they, as they are charged with making the decision.
I think, I think you're right with the residential, leave it, leave it there, but the sixty feet for the hotels, if you're okay with that, then you should be fine with five feet more for the commercial. Because, I mean, Meryl Rhodes, fifty-five, you know, and that's not that massive. I mean, it look...
It's also not a comparable area either. I mean, it's right in the middle of big commercial, so that's not really very...
There's a lot of neighbors behind you that would argue with that, but,
well...
But what I'm saying is when you're driving by it, you look up, the last five feet, they painted it blue, you can't hardly even notice it. That's what I'm saying, it's the, the parapet walls on top.
No, I understand.
Because it looked a lot bigger until we put the
The residential is...
Stuff around it.
Residential is my biggest argument on this. I think it should stay at thirty-five.
I think it should too, and I, and I think that, the twelve B and twelve A should be left alone. I mean, twelve A wasn't in there, sorry, but if twelve B's residential, what was twelve B? Twelve B is a, makes, is a village.
Twelve B was a short-term rental overlay, so residential with a short-term rental overlay. And one of the things that's... Sorry, I'm looking at the...
And twelve B wanted to go to, uh...
Sorry, let me, you're talking about this one or the prior twelve?
This one.
Yeah, this one's, this one is...
Mixed-use zone.
Mixed-use with a short-term rental overlay.
Yeah, and that, that one wants a sixty-foot, and I think that sixty feet right behind that farmhouse and would look out of place, but that's, I would kick that one out and let, let the rest of them go. Except for the residential. That's my opinion. Makes most sense to me, but, I mean, it's up to you guys.
So we, I still think we recommend denial, but we've had this conversation that we're not necessarily any, you know, against all of it, but let city council parse it out.
Recommend approval, but exclude this, this, and this, because that's kind of what we're doing. Let them, yeah, I mean, they will, but your recommendation on parceling it out, do you have a recommendation? I, I feel like if we don't send, you don't just send them a blank denial, send them with an option as well. Our, our opinion, that's why we're here.
Saying, so you're saying leave, leave hotels and, and professional offices at sixteen and fifty, but residential is thirty-five, so kick that one out. And you're saying kick out number three, item number three too? Or what, what was?
Twelve, twelve B.
B.
Just that area, I wouldn't, I wouldn't change it, just because I wouldn't think a sixty-foot one right behind there. But that's something that council might, can still look at though, you know, when they get to that point.
Commissioner Bullock's identified an interesting issue. Twelve B is, is categorized as mixed-use, which would give it up to the, the residential mixed-use, and you know, they might choose to relabel that as not mixed-use, because I, my understanding is that's all going to be residential.
Right.
But it might be residential with a nighttame, nighttime rental overlay on it, and so I think just your, your, your feedback and the council wrestles with it, and the applicant wrestles together with the council, and let's see where they can get.
How about this, I'll try it, my motion. Mr. Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Z dash twenty-five dash thirteen with, with the following conditions, that the residential is left at thirty-five feet in both zones, and that that pod twelve B does not get put in the hospitality zone. Or the mixed-use zone, excuse me.
Or at least the height waiver, yeah.
Yeah, so it wouldn't have the high, the, the higher things in twelve B.
So the conditions, I'll restate them for you, Commissioner. Approval without approving the increase on residential, so leaving residential at the current standard, and treating twelve B such that it doesn't get the sixty-foot hotel approval.
Correct, yes.
And first by Commissioner Anderson. Do we have a second?
Sure, this is Shill, I'll second.
All right. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shill.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tuppo.
Nay.
I'm Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. This will go to city council next week. Item five A is a conditional use permit. C dash twenty-three dash fifteen, request to update the phasing plan for previously approved conditional use permit for storage units located in the southwest corner of eight forty south and one hundred east. Advocate is Tim Stewart, and the owner is Thea Bald Investments. We'll turn this over to Eldon.
Thank you, commissioners. This project here was previously approved. This one's a little simpler than the, the last few. And with it being industrial, is approved here at the planning commission level, so this will not move on to city council. The applicant is proposing a revised phasing plan showing the roadway and landscape improvements adjacent to eight forty south to be built in three phases rather than in the first phase as originally approved. With this being a significant change to the plan, the updated plan requires approval from the planning commission. So with that, that, that concludes staff's report. Nothing else is changing in the project other than that phase one, applicants proposing that it does not extend all the way down eight forty south, eighty-four, eight forty south roadway improvements would be broken into three phases. I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions on that.
Commissioner Davis, could you just walk us through kind of part of the conversation we had with respect to the, the full plan for, for, is it heat, heat forty, I believe?
The connectivity there?
Yes.
Yeah, you, you bet, great question. So long-term, if, if you drove, maybe pull up the, the master plan roadway plan there, and you can see that eight forty south long-term, you know, there's going to be some connectivity tying into Saint George. Um, currently, that land is undeveloped. Timing on that is unknown. However, when that development comes, there's a high probability that it could dump onto eight forty south and increase traffic flows there. Um, but again, that's, you know, currently, it's raw land, sagebrush and tumbleweeds on that. Um, but, but there will be some east-to-west connectivity through there. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yes, it does. Again, the, and the question, it really forms around, you know, they're looking to phase, they want to phase this instead of doing it all, you know, all at once as previously discussed. And it's taken them a while, it appears, to, to get this going. So the, the, the concern may be, you just want to make sure that, that that element has been, has been taken care of, and you don't get yourself in a trick bag if, if the road comes to it, we need to make sure it's being handled, and that there are some teeth in any approval that would ensure that that takes...
Exactly.
That's just my comments and...
The phase one's still phase one, they're still going to do one hundred east.
Correct, yes, phase one includes all of one hundred east and then stops one to two hundred feet back where that red line is there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, to the, to the building or...
On eight forty, do they know what their setback's going to be on that road? When that road actually comes in?
Y- yes, yes, that right-of-way is established and, and the setback is, is set.
They, they're going to be required to build their half of eight forty south, and so they'll have to conform, their plans will have, will be subject to review, and will have to conform to all the setbacks that exist, and this is just straight zoning, so will have to conform to the, the codified setbacks for commercial. I think the request tonight is, instead of requiring the full length of eight forty south with phase one, they're asking that the, the city authorize them to build that each section of the eight forty south with the different phases that, that travel along it.
That's, I mean, eight forty's not a very, there's just a, a few homes there, and they're going to take most of it and fix it, so I'm, I'm okay with the, with the phasing the way it is.
I mean, I, ideally, this Commissioner Mitchell, ideally, you build that full road, left, less breakups and less starts, stops. But I see, I, I mean, I agree with what they're trying to do, it makes sense, affordability to do it in phases. From someone that was going to drive on that road every day, it would be better if it was done at once, but not a huge deal. We have a lot of those roads in the city anyway, right?
That's what we were trying to avoid with bringing it all in at once, is just the outs and ins and, and whatnot, so that, you know, that's how it was approved originally, but again, the applicant financially asked, hey, can we, can we do otherwise here for financial purposes?
I, I think the phasing is fine. Because when they do two and three, they'll, they'll pick it up, and two and three will come after one, right? I mean, we're going to go in order, not one, four, five, six, two and three, hopefully.
Correct, we, we would hold them to this phasing plan, this order.
To the phasing numbering, so that the phases, I mean, just because you have phases doesn't mean you have to build them in those phases. They will follow one, they, they'll follow the phases numerically. Well, yeah, but... Thanks, Eldon.
And again, the, the planning commission approves this with it just being an, an industrial project.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing as well, if anyone would like to speak to this public hearing. Okay, we'll close the public hearing on this and look for a motion. No, we approve it.
This is Shill, I'll take a stab at it. Uh, I would move that we, uh, approve C dash two-three dash one-five for the storage unit facility request along the setback relief to zero feet for buildings A, J, K, L, M, N, and P along with, am I on the right one? I didn't think so.
Five C. Five A, sorry.
It says five A on there.
That's it. He's reading the recommendation. Right here.
Well, I was, you're down there.
You were on the right one.
That was the original one.
That's what's in my packet.
That was the original one, from, right?
Here. This recommendation, yeah, that's where he's reading.
Don't need to talk about all this.
Yeah, he's reading the recommendation.
Okay, so let's start over. That I would recommend that the plant, I would move that the planning commission approves C dash two-three dash one-five, or
Update the phasing plan.
Based on the findings and conditions.
Commissioner Anderson, a second.
And first by a recommendation for approval by Commissioner Shill, and second by Commissioner Anderson, individual voting. Commissioner Tuppo.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Shill.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson. I'm Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. This is approved. Next is item six A. This was the, the Z dash twenty-five dash zero-eight, request to rezone approximately thirty-five point four-two acres located at approximately Heritage Fields Drives and Nelson Ranch Road from the current eight twenty to the proposed OS and PUDR zoning designation. This is a continuance from the April sixteenth meeting that we, that we had tabled. So I will turn this over to Eldon. He moved.
This item was tabled on the last planning commission, and the applicants submitted revisions here. They have increased the setback between the homes, specifically the side yard setback being a minimum aggregate of fifteen feet for each lot with a minimum of five feet. So they can't go closer than five feet. If they go five feet on one side, they have to bring a minimum of ten feet on the other. They could go seven and a half feet on one side and seven and a half feet on the other to get a, a aggregate of fifteen feet. The revised plan incorporates another access onto Nelson Ranch Road near twenty east. The applicant has provided an option two plan relocating the twenty east access closer to mid-block due to a few concerns that came up while addressing the access, such as road alignment and above-ground utilities. You can see there where the proposed road ties into twenty east, just the canter of it tying in doesn't quite meet the access management standards. So they threw an option two in there to, to address some concerns that, that may come up, and John's here tonight to discuss the specifics of that if needed. The revised plan reduced the unit count by four with the new proposal being eighty-seven lots. This is a two-point-four-five density unit per acre ratio when looking at all thirty-five point four-two acres, and a three-point-six-two density per unit acre ratio when looking at the twenty-three point nine-nine acres. Also included here is the erosion, erosion protection wall has been relocated inward towards the development to allow more of a buffer in that wash area. Approximately twenty to twenty-five feet, so those lots were reduced. And then lastly, the amenity area has increased approximately point three-two acres in size for more amenity. Uh, that, that concludes the updates there. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thanks, Eldon.
I will maybe just start the discussion. If, if they did go straight zoning here, if, you know, they just, however, failed out and, and they brought back straight zoning, which came up last time, you know, there'd be approximately seventy-seven units in here. They're proposing eighty-seven with this revised plan.
Straight zoning doesn't usually come with amenity either, and so frequently, straight zoning, you don't have common areas and you don't have...
yeah, you don't have the common amenities.
I just don't want there to be an assumption that if we go straight zoning, there's gonna be a significant reduction in lots.
Right.
There could be, there could not be, but the applicant thought seventy-seven would pencil out-ish.
It's always harder to plan the last field than it is to plan the, the development of the first field and so this field, the owner of this field has the same rights under state land use laws to apply to change a zone that the fields to the north, the west, and the south of this have already applied for and have, have built out as well. Washington City hasn't gone and asked any of those owners to submit applications, they've submitted pursuant to state law and the city has a, a duty to allow them to apply and then a responsibility on the different boards to hear the application, question it, and then make recommendations at this level and then make a decision at the next level. But it's always hardest to, that, that last field's the hardest one to plan.
Thanks, Eldon. You guys have any questions for Eldon or should I? Move to the public hearing portion. So this is a continuation of last, of the last planning commission meeting, we already had our public hearing for this unit, for this, but where they revised it, we will entertain, we'll, we'll have a public hearing on the revisions that they've made to this and I feel like that's a fair statement, so we're not rehashing the same ones that we've heard from the previous one, is that correct, that, Drew?
Well, I think that it's your purview to decide what comments you want public comment on and I think I hear you saying that you took a lot of comment at the prior meeting and you're opening, willing to open a public hearing at this one and you're asking them to, to keep their comments or limit their comments to the changes that have been made so that you can receive that, that feedback at this time.
Correct. So with that being said.
Plus, plus we've received comments.
Yes.
Email-wise, we've read and we do not need duplicated.
Yes, very true.
Yeah, I'll, I'll comment on that, during the COVID era, the city started receiving a lot of emailed or, or kind of electronically provided comments and the city, city kind of went through time where they felt like they needed to read them all into the record. Um, there's no law that requires that and the policy has changed. We asked the boards to acknowledge the receipt of electronically submitted feedback, but it's been a couple of years now since they've read it into the record. So I guess there's an advantage, if you come in person, you get to speak it into the record, if you're gonna write it by an email, uh.
We read it and it's.
You'll acknowledge that you received it.
So with that being said, we'll open up the public hearing for this item.
Um, my name is Jacob Larson, I am a resident of Washington City. We live in a subdivision that is very similar to this one, we live in Red Trails in Washington and, um, the lot sizes are significantly smaller than the ones being proposed and I will say, we've been there for two years, we, this was an Enz home and the, the type of development we live in, there's like SNS Homes, there's Sullivan, there's Enz, or some other builders and it is a great place to live, honestly. Um, we have a park down the road, there's a pickleball park, pretty much everyone just goes and hangs out. One of the things that I think people sometimes don't realize, it's really great with these smaller lots, is it's often a lot easier for kids to get to their friends', uh, houses, it's more walkable. I was just running the numbers, I think like the median price right now in like a home in Washington City is, um, almost like six hundred thousand dollars, maybe that's not listed. I think the, the income that's required to buy a house is like a hundred and forty thousand dollars, household income, so, um, the type, like our next door neighbor, dental hygienist, we have several police officers on our street, we have nurses, we have teachers, I think it's a very good thing that we're creating housing that is, um, like maybe more accessible for the current, uh, economic price, uh, interest rates and, um, so anyway, I'm just a concerned citizen and I'm always for, in favor of having more neighbors that, that can live here. I think one of the challenges in this environment is we have oftentimes lots of second home buyers, um, out of state buyers, which is fine, I don't end against them, but if we don't create housing that's like for the worker bees, the people that run the city, it just becomes like a retirement community and you kind of have a hollowing out of the feeling where everyone is just, you know, unless you got a significant, you know, from the bank of mom and dad, like you're really kind of priced out of the community and we're starting to see that, like people are like, well, I gotta move to Cedar City or I guess I gotta move to Mesquite or I've gotta move to Enoch or I guess I gotta move to Iowa or Kansas or something, so I think this is a smart decision and, uh, you know, like, again, I'm just speaking on behalf of myself, no ties to any builder or anyone, but I also do recommend, I do represent the Housing Action Coalition and so we, we weigh in on these issues and try and say, hey, we, we need a more diverse array of housing, so, um, I would encourage you to strongly consider this 'cause I think it's a smart move, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mel Milgram, I live on twenty east and, um, this commission holds the power to take a neighborhood that's nice and quiet, um, safe, and that's the big thing, safe, and put in a development that doesn't fit, you know, like during the, um, there was a trial for OJ Simpson, they said if the glove doesn't fit, you must acquit. Well, this project doesn't fit, you must leave the zoning as it is, please, with respect. The, um, proposal for lower income, lower priced houses, that's a wonderful idea, however, we know that people will buy these homes just to make rentals out of them and the chaos that this will create in the neighborhood, uh, the appearance, the traffic, and we're not talking only about the traffic from the neighbors that are going to move in there, but we're talking about the traffic from all the deliveries, the FedEx, the Amazon, plumbers, everybody else that's gonna be coming in there. Twenty east will not become, it will no longer be a safe street and an absolute need for traffic light on, um, twenty east and, uh, two thousand, eh, south will be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also live on twenty east and I am really concerned about the traffic. From what I understand, the, the way that this has been configured, most of the traffic is going to be on twenty east.
Do you mind stating your name for the record?
Oh, sorry, Barbara Paul. Um, I live on the corner and I, we are a collector's street already, we, we get a lot of traffic from people on the west, on the east, um, cross, settlers crossing and we see them go down our street constantly, I, I see kids there, I see near misses with kids on bicycles and cars already, so my question to you is has there been a traffic impact study done on what this will do to our neighborhoods and can we ask for that? And how much traffic are we to expect? I mean, we're talking eighty-seven units going down mainly from two blocks, how much traffic is that gonna add? It, I, is, can we do some studies? Is this really an appropriate thing to put in this high-density pad when it's surrounded by homes that are a quarter acre or more and that was, the traffic was actually at the time that these homes went in was for them and now we're putting in this high-density project where I don't feel like our, our neighborhoods can sustain the traffic without, without really impacting the value of our homes and our safety and, and our community. Why can't this be quarter acre lots and have it fit in with what's out there already? Why does it have to be high-density?
Because we're not, I mean, we're not really here to argue with you back and forth, we're here to listen to your concerns.
No, I'm not asking arguments, I want, I want some feedback, can we have a traffic study?
We'll try, I'll, we'll try to answer.
What are we looking at?
I'll try to answer your questions. Usually at zone change, because that's the very first application that happens to raw ground, usually the city doesn't require that a traffic study be submitted at that point. Let me finish, but with development of this nature, typically the city does require the applicant, once they start submitting development applications, to give us a traffic study. And so, yeah, there probably will be a traffic study, no, there probably hasn't been one yet because this is the very first phase of going from a, a historic zone of agriculture to a residential use.
Right, then, then that's my question, why, why would we even approve that without even having those studies beforehand, without even understanding how it's gonna impact our neighborhoods? Because I guess there was another neighborhood that actually said no, that they couldn't, you couldn't drive out through their neighborhood, they didn't want the traffic, why would we want this traffic? And then that puts a, it, it puts more traffic on us when another, when there isn't an outlet through this other neighborhood.
There's outlets through the other neighborhoods.
Yeah, you have to give us the example, there's neighborhoods with private roads, the city council doesn't get to put public traffic through private roads, but public roads are public roads, uh, the public gets to use them.
All of them.
Commissioner? I think she had, she had one other question, what was the other question, Commissioner?
So number two is a condition, traffic study condition.
Yeah, that, that they'll have to obtain one, yeah.
Also, all of the lots that are surrounding, all the smaller lots have been moved into the middle of the subdivision and all of the lots surrounding point-one, point-two, there's some third acre lots in this.
Oh, I remember the other question. The city doesn't classify these lot sizes as high-density, um, I, I will acknowledge that it's higher density than perhaps where you live, but it, high-density in the city's classifications is, is much smaller lots than this.
Hi Commissioners, my name is James Yor, I live on Heritage Fields Drive and I just wanna start by saying I really appreciate some of the changes that have been made in this proposal. I really appreciate how much they've moved it in from the river, I think that's really important, I'm not sure it's enough, I think if you go down there and spend time in those river bottoms, you'll see what I'm talking about, it's, it, it's one of the few places where our animals that have all been crowded in from all the building have, um, and it's, it's beautiful space for open spaces and greenbelt, um, so I, I would take a look at that and see if we could move that in further because wherever that line is, then we still have to build in the flood protection and then there's a trail and it just really encroaches in there and I really, um, appreciate what Attorney Segler said about this being the last lot and it's, it's tricky, you know, I mean, the last field, it's hard to figure out what to do with that last field, but that's the situation we're in, so this lot is surrounded by all of these neighborhoods that have been developed, that there's a certain, um, you know, feeling to it and so even with, I know we're limiting our comments to the proposed updates, even with those proposed updates, I still think if you just step back and look at the big picture, you're, you're taking, um, you know, seventy whatever houses and plopping it down there in this little triangle that's already been built all around it, so much so that we're having to like kind of finagle the roads to make it work and I appreciate that additional outlet that was put in there, but it doesn't change the fact that there're gonna be, you know, a hundred new vehicles or more coming in and out of that every day, it took me five minutes to turn left to come to this meeting and that's because to get on to three hundred east, everybody's, even though there's all these different outlets, I mean, everybody's gonna go, need to go get on to three hundred east and they're gonna go down one residential road to do that and there's a road intersecting just right off three hundred east, there's just one barrier of homes there, so it's backing up traffic into the three different roads and so I'm not sure what your rights are, I'm not sure constitutionally about what needs to happen with zoning and who can decide what, I'm just saying, none of us like the traffic that's going on in this town and if you guys can't deal with that, who can? And if it's city council, then great, these, you know, our, our general plan has this type of more dense housing where there's bigger arteries and I, I'm, I'm with you on the housing issue, it's a huge problem, but the, the general plan calls to put those types of housing where there're big arteries and roadways that can handle that with the infrastructure, this isn't it, this is the last little tucked-in field and so I appreciate all the challenges and everything that's going on with it, but for me, this is still just too much traffic coming in and out of there and there's precious greenbelt that I think we could move even more if the city is forward-thinking, thinking about how to protect those spaces, 'cause when those are gone, it's gone and if you watch the time-release video, the, the way the Virgin River is moving towards this track right here, it's moved over so much in the last ten years alone, so I just feel like there's a lot to consider with this little lot and I, I, I'm sorry about how it's so hard with the last piece, but there's still lots of pieces that I wanted to share that, thanks.
Thank you.
My name is James Paul, I live on twenty east, it seems like the recent changes have put more traffic don't come down twenty east. If you look at twenty east, there's a handful of families with small children, where I live on a quarter lot, you see children race across through this stop sign, not even looking, all the time, you put a bunch of traffic going down twenty east, you put a lot of kids at risk, kids are playing in the street and they're everywhere and all of a sudden you put a development where it seems like what they're doing is putting a square peg into a round hole, trying to make it fit, it doesn't fit, in my opinion, I think it's just too dense of properties, too many cars going up and down twenty east in other areas, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Christensen and I don't like talking in front of people, so, um, I actually didn't prepare exactly what I wanted to say, um, but I love what this gentleman said originally about the benefits of these areas like, like these smaller homes, I love that, you know, people can afford them more, it provides community and, and closeness and recreation and I love that, but I also agree that this isn't the place for it, this is, um, what's the other, so twenty east will be where they'll be coming into, what's the other outlet street that they'll be getting out of that?
Three hundred east. Three hundred east and Heritage Fields.
Okay, um.
And I see three, you got twenty east, um, the Latte Drive, Violet Drive and.
Nelson Ranch Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the problem is that, um, there, the roadways just are not built for this, I mean, it's kind of like what you were saying, like this other gentleman was saying, is that, um, I don't see, these are all lined with homes and I don't see how they could be widened or how they could be, um, take care of all the traffic that this type of a development will cause and, um, with the heritage, um, the, um, not heritage, the Sullivan Homes area that was recent, is, is developing now and was recently developed, um, we have seen a big increase of traffic on Canterbury, over to twenty east, people will cut through from Washington Fields, a road over to, uh, twenty east and go up twenty east up to Sandia Road, um, so it's just, I just agree that this isn't the place for this type of development and, um, something can work, I also wanted to emphasize. I also wanted to emphasize, um, I mean, we have had some flooding issues here. Um, I live on Seventeen Twenty-Five South. Um, we've had flooding issues there since I've lived there about, uh, fifteen years. Um, we've had, um, issues throughout the time whenever we have a big rain and it will back up from the river. And I know the city's been working on that and I'm not sure what the state of that is now because I, we haven't had a flood, so I haven't seen it. But the river will back up into the streets through the, the, um, you know, the drainage. So I just think we really are not choosing an appropriate use of this land and especially along the river there. And I agree, if we can have, it, it does concern me about the flooding, um, and for the people that are going to be living there. Um, I think they have a risk of flooding also, just like, like we are having sometimes. So anyway, um, I just wanted to tell you I appreciate the way you work through these things because I haven't been at these meetings before and I see you guys talking through some things and, and I appreciate what you do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tyrone Atkin. Um, I live in Stone Creek Meadows. Uh, I am a little bit, uh, on the fence about this. I work in the industry of designing, uh, developments. I don't do developments myself. I design roads, but, um, I, if I had a preference on, uh, the plans that they proposed here, uh, it would be more the first one as far as the road layout goes. Um, I feel like that would, and a traffic study would probably have to be done to, uh, determine how it splits the traffic, but I feel like that would split the traffic better, uh, between Twenty East and Three Hundred East. And for those wanting to get over to like the Linds and Smiths area, um, I don't know that it changes anything, uh, for those going over to Washington Fields Road. The, I know in the last meeting, uh, there was a comment from, uh, one of Commissioners here, I don't know who it was, I was listening online, but about the, the smaller-ish lot sizes, um, trying to make them, uh, similar to the rest of the neighborhood. I know it doesn't decrease the density that much. Um, I think you're saying, uh, ten lots less roughly, um, which isn't, I don't think that's, uh, too much of a concern, but I do agree that, um, we, with the affordability of the smaller lots and, uh, smaller houses that may be on those lots. Uh, I think my one's concern about that would be something that's been brought up with, uh, uh, ownership of them, uh, making them rentals, but, um, if there were, and I don't know the laws on this, maybe, uh, I could expound on that, but, um, is there a way to, uh, put them in, uh, to zone them in a way that only, uh, the owners could live there? Uh, is that a possibility or is that something that can't be done?
This city has never put such a restriction on land. Um, and the challenge is, you say only the owners, but you know, the owner could be an investment trust, right? The owner could be, we have what's called fractional ownership. We have LLCs that are buying properties and then it's, that property's owned by eight families that own the LLC and then they treat it like, like you would say a house bought at Lake Powell, you get your three weeks and then you, you get three guaranteed weeks and then one alternate week. And so owners can be more than just families and that's the biggest complication there. This city's never put that type of a requirement, although I've heard our, our city council frequently ask applicants, you know, who do you plan to be your customers? And so I, I know they're thinking about wanting owners that will move in and, and, and become part of the community, but they've never put a requirement that they can only be owner-occupied.
Yeah. And that, uh, in my neighborhood, we have quite a few houses that are rentals that they've been renting for years and years and, uh, they haven't been issued. So I don't know that I have that big of a concern about them becoming rentals, but, um, I think owner-occupied is, uh, better serves the community, but those are my concerns.
Can I ask you how your parking is?
Uh, in...
In where you currently live? You live in a small area?
Uh, I live in Stone Creek Meadows. Uh, there's some street parking, but not tons. Um, the driveways are generally big enough that, uh, most of the houses can, uh, park their vehicles on the driveway. So it is a concern driving through like Canterwood when vehicles are parked on both sides of this, of the street. Um, it becomes a one-lane road at that point. Uh, but I don't know that that would be a concern, uh, too big of a concern in this neighborhood. Um, but yeah, I think the road layout from the, the initial one would be, uh, more ideal.
Hello, my name is Mick Hardman. I live right across this beautiful field for the last 14 years. Uh, we moved from Las Vegas and I, uh, I actually lived three years in a community like this. Um, two-story, two-story houses about 10 feet apart. We could barely park our cars. It was like a nightmare at times. Um, one of the reasons why we left, I had job opportunities down there, but we wanted to be a little more open area, so we moved here. Um, so my biggest concern is the high-density traveling through a low-density area. Um, just the traffic, like everyone, like everyone else says, I think it, I'm not opposed to high-density. I think it should be by major roadways. Um, it's my job security at the hospital. I like the population moving here, but I just think it needs to be by major roadways and not traveling through a lower-population area. So, thank you.
I, I want to, I want to, I keep hearing this come up. And everybody keeps saying it's high-density, it's high-density. It is not high-density. There's 10 lots more than what they could actually go for. That's still a medium to low-density. It is not high-density. High-density is 15 to 16 units per acre. This is three. So, per acre. I just want to put that out there. This is not a high-density subdivision.
Uh, Nathan Lewis. I live in the adjacent neighborhood here in Washington. Uh, this is a minimum of 154 additional cars of traffic coming through established neighborhoods, communities with children. Um, all residential roads, none of it high-traffic road. Um, minimum, uh, roads are in every direction, single lane. There's nothing, multiple lanes to handle, uh, the additional homes being here and it does not match the current zoning surrounding the community. Um, I believe the, they were requested to make, uh, lot adjustments, which they did in a very minor way. There looks to be some minor adjustments, but not nearly, um, enough to even meet the minimum. The, the reduction of 10 homes to get to the other type of zoning, forgive me for not knowing the jargon, um, would be the minimum, uh, reduction, uh, in my mind as a citizen who lives in this community, the request, is to match zoning with surrounding zoning. We understand this is the last field to be bought and they are landlocked against a river. And that, that creates their own, uh, demise or frustrations with building on the lot and trying to be profitable as a business to make that transaction work for them. I understand that, but, um, being realistic in that, an additional 150-plus, uh, cars driving down my streets makes me concerned for my three children. And being realistic at putting two cars per home is probably being very minimalist. Uh, we're probably looking at additional 200 cars. Um, and more than likely, they're all headed the same direction, first thing in the morning, coming from the same direction at night. So consider that as you weigh in your options, an additional 200 homes or additional 200 cars driving down our street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley Hansen, um, I really didn't want to get up, which is why I sent an email. But, um, based off of Eldon's comments and what we have referenced a couple of times already today, and what was referenced in the last hearing, I wanted to put a correction in and it was like number nine on my email and it's about R1, R110 straight zoning. Bush and Judd did a engineered plan. It fits only 42 lots and it's attached to that email, so you can see it. Um, yeah, that's all, that's all I wanted to say, but, and that's also, also enclosed, enclosed on there are some video images off of Google Earth. That was before the river moved 1,500 feet in, in towards that, more in towards that field. Anyway, that's all I want to say.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Jonathan Little. I live, uh, on 1470 South, just adjacent to the proposed development. I understand that development is going to happen. I echo some of the things that have been said already, very much deposed to the PUD. Um, if the developer says that they can fit just about as many homes on a straight zoning, then I would encourage the recommendation to not approve the PUD and to just let them take a straight zoning on this. Thank you.
If there's no one else, we'll close the public hearing portion of this. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing portion on this. It is closed. Commissioners, you have any other thoughts on this?
Maybe while you're thinking, I'll, I'll talk to the question of kind of constitutional rights. The United States Constitution and the Constitution of Utah both have provisions that prohibit the taking of private property without just compensation. And the courts have interpreted that to apply to cities who by regulation don't allow people to make use of their land. And so the way that gets applied, the, the way those decisions get applied to cities is frequently on denials of use applications. Uh, for, that's one reason why cities do general plans and then do zoning is if they can approve and deny things based on the classifications that the city planned for before the applications are received, the courts have upheld those. And so like the other land around it, Washington City has an obligation to accept an application from this landowner that proposes to make uses of that. And then our job is just to look at that application and then for our elected folks at, at the city council to make decisions about whether that should be vested use or not. Um, a lot of communities, uh, where I went to law school in, in Western Montana, they would have ballot initiatives that would approve bonds that would go purchase and own land like this and preserve it from development forever. Um, without that, uh, this, these landowners have the right to do this, right? They have the right to apply for and change the use. And so I guess that's the, the commentary as to the, the constitutional rights. There is a constitutional right that we could run afoul of if we don't allow someone to, to make use of their land. Our job at the planning commission is to look at their application and, and compare it to the technical specifications. The first one that you hear all the time is, does it conform to the general plan? And in this, in this case, this proposal does conform to the general plan, which is really just a density allocation as well as a use. And then this one, I, remind me, Eldon, what the general plan designation is on this one? Medium density is, is what the general plan says. And so this, this proposal tonight produces a density that fits within the definition of medium density. And then there's other things, you know, the roads and the width, road width, a lot of the, of the, uh, the, the citizens have commented on that. Um, those are specifications that ultimately get reviewed and approved or denied at plan review, but the, the developer will, will be required to build sufficient width on the roads as well as curb gutter and sidewalk to meet the city's standards on those things. If not, they get denied. And so we, we wouldn't deny it just on the nature of it, but if they produce plans that are specific to those things that aren't sufficient, we would deny it on the basis of our, of our code that, that requires that. And so this level is looking at it as, does it meet the technical specifications of, of a developer in Washington City? And then the planning commission gets to decide that.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. This just brings up a question. So are these roads that are being proposed in the new development the same width as the current, like Heritage Field Road?
Correct. They aren't any narrower than the roads that already exist. They would be the same width and that would be the city's minimum residential feeder roads.
Commissioner Shill. I had a, uh, pretty uncomfortable call this last week. I've had a, a crazy week, but I had a crazy call, uh, about this property and, and accusing me that I didn't know what I was doing, accusing some of us up here that we didn't know what we were doing. It was pretty uncomfortable and it upset me. I, I, uh, let him know that it upset me. He knew that. Uh, I think we're both sorry for one another, but, uh, and then I get a phone, a, a email from Habitat for Humanity. And I'm thinking, how in the heck am I getting that? Telling me, you know, this is, this needs to go through. Why am I getting that? Did anybody else get an email like that? Uh, it, it blew my mind. Anyway, I don't understand why I got that, why I got the phone call because it shouldn't have been me that got the phone call. It should have been more staff. But, uh, I took it and I'm fine with that. Uh, but also in the week, I, I went out and I poured some concrete for my daughter out in Devario. And, and, uh, you know, I got looking at it out there and, and their side yards are five feet. They're little. We poured the concrete. It turned out nice. You're going to have a nice backyard. And I'm looking at it thinking, it's truly not that bad. And, and so then I, I look at what the developer did here and he basically did everything we told him to do. Give us more side yard. He did. He came back at 15 feet. I think seven and a half, seven and a half is fabulous. Even 10 and 5, I think 10 is really good on the, on the garage side. And, and keep the cars off of the street. And, and that's how Devario is. It's, they're pretty much keeping the cars off the street other than construction. Construction is, you know, it's a hassle. We all have to go through the construction phase and put up with the trucks that deliver, put up with the, with the plumber trucks and the, the carpenter trucks. It's just a phase that we have to go through. So I looked at that and I'm thinking, crap, I'd have rather had my daughter right here. That would have been 10 minutes away from me than going 40 minutes away. That would have been a heck of a lot better for me, but this wasn't there. So I, I'm, I, I like what they did and, and I'm fine with it. I, I would probably vote yea. So hip, hip, hurrah.
Commissioner, did you by chance also start getting daily cat jokes texted to you? Can't start getting daily cat jokes texted to you? You got put on the wrong list.
This is the honor representative, Wanda.
How you doing? I appreciate your time. Adam Allen, American Consulting and Engineering. Um, I just wanted to address a couple of the comments that came up with the river moving and the flooding that we're, obviously the owners are concerned with that too, right? That doesn't work well if this floods out, but that is what that big rip-rap protection is for that's going to go in, is to prevent that river from moving any farther. That's what's going to present these house, prevent these houses and other houses by proxy without ever coming in. So doing that, uh, will help alleviate that and that'll help stop that river from moving in an event that it does. Uh, the other thing with the flooding, we just also wanted to say is we, everything there will be built higher than the flood elevations that are listed and given to us by FEMA. They've actually done a pretty extensive study in this area, given us base flood elevations. And so we know that we will need to be higher than those to make sure that nobody in this neighborhood floods out. And so from a flooding standpoint, we just wanted to say that nothing in here would be anywhere to where it should be flooded, especially with putting in that protection. And then as far as the, the roadways go, you know, we wanted to do public streets. They're 50 feet wide, so they can't afford parking on both sides without it being just a little tiny, you know, speedway through there. And this will also be finishing lots of, you know, two other roads to help finish that out to where traffic does flow better, so.
So this, Shill, can we put something in CCNRs that, that... So this, Shill, can we put something in C C N Rs that, that limit parking on the street?
I don't think that we can.
We don't allow C C N Rs to govern public roads, Commissioner. So if it's private roads, they can, but if it's public roads, we don't, we don't allow C C N Rs to do that. I should, I should say state law and federal law don't allow C C N Rs to do that.
Well, I'm sorry, I tried. I, I think that's the problem is parking on the street. That's, that's an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is Commissioner Mitchell. That, uh, can you help me better understand that affordability, like the restrictions upon a city to allow? I see a two, a two-part here. You have an owner that's trying to optimize his value, right? He's got a piece of property and he wants to optimize what he can get in return. Then you also have a buyer, you know, trying to optimize based on the price of the, the one selling to make everything pencil out. So you've got two people there that control what the affordability really becomes, correct? So how do you pin that on one or the other?
Yeah, so you've got a farmer who's been happy with, you know, the profits produced by Alfalfa for a long time, right? And that farmer sees the opportunity to, to convert his profits to a one-time land sale at land prices today. Um, you've also got a buyer who's proposing a land use that can pay for the purchase and then, you know, compensate them for their efforts. And most of our citizens live in a neighborhood that was built based on that same traction, that, that, that same transaction over the last thirty years. I had a developer explain it to me. I, I was trying to figure out why, why are lots getting so much smaller? And he, he explained that the, the massive increase in land prices make it so that if you're gonna buy a half acre lot today, you're a, you just can't, you can't put a house on it that's a three bedroom, two bath with an open carport like you could in the eighties on a half acre lot. You have to actually build a house with a value that corresponds to the price tag of that lot. And so one way that they're able to bring housing prices down is smaller lots, cause then you can afford to build a smaller house on a smaller lot. Also smaller lots by very nature, you can't build your house off of your boundary line. So you, you have a smaller house anyway, but the developer explained it to me that way. And that's one way that they're making houses more affordable is by allowing development to use smaller lots. That helps the house's prices be lower than they would be if we just let, you know, the, the wealthiest folks build the, their favorite lots everywhere. You'd get, you'd still get bigger lots and with bigger lots, you'd have more expensive homes because if you pay five hundred thousand dollars for a lot, you, you're not gonna put a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house on a five hundred thousand dollar lot is, is the analogy that was explained to me. But, but there's no, no doubt that every one of us live in a house that used to be a farm at some point. At some point, that farmer captured his profits or her profits. And then a developer came in and proposed a use that could pay for those, the, the farmer's profits as well as create a profit for them. And if you live in that house very long, the market will go up and you'll have your own profit so you can harvest someday.
So let me try to answer your question a little bit. Commissioner Mitchell, this is Commissioner Anderson. So the, the people looking to develop this, I mean, they could make a similar amount of money, whether it's bigger lots or smaller lots. It's not, that's not the motivation behind this because they would, they could make similar amounts of money. Bigger lot, bigger lots sell for more money and they cost, you know, it costs less to develop. The biggest reason here is trying to fit the market of something that's not available, you know, something that, that everyday people can buy. I mean, there are three, three main costs that go into the price of a home. Your biggest one is the cost of the lot. The second one is how big the house is, right? And then the third one is your, your cost like impact fees and, and things like that that, that you have to pay before you even build a house. So in, in this case, if you reduce the size of, of, of some of these lots, you make it, you make it more affordable to where, you know, when you're building a house, a rule of thumb is a lot is gonna cost about a fourth of your house roughly. And just for appraisal sake and so forth, it's about where, where it works out. Usually twenty-five to thirty percent of, of the total price. So if you have, if you have, you know, quarter acre lots and they sell for whatever, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever they sell for now, you know, you're talking a million dollar house. And with current interest rates and things, most everyday people can't afford that. You know, you're talking, then you're talking only people moving in from out of state, you know, with, with large down payments can buy it or buy it as a second home or, or, or people buying families, I mean, all that stuff. That's, that's the kind of stuff that you get when the houses are, are not, you know, attainable. If you cut the lot size down like this, you know, you might drop off, you know, a hundred thousand dollars on the, on the lot price or more, you know? And so suddenly you have, you have a, a home that instead of being a million dollar home, maybe it's, it's in the five hundred thousand dollar range. Now it could be nicer, but it makes it to where it, it's actually possible to do that. You can, you can reach, you know, first time home buyers, you can reach move-up buyers, you can, you know, you can reach that whole population. The second thing that they, they talked about last meeting is, is that the water district is trying to reduce water usage. And one of the ways they're encouraging to do so is if lot sizes are at a, a certain size, then they can get, you know, they, they have, they only have to pay half the impact fee. That's not money that goes back to the, to the applicant or to the developer. That's money to the end user, whoever, you know, is trying to build their home on these lots. When they go to build it, they're gonna save eight thousand bucks, you know, on, on, uh, impact fees before they even start, you know? So between the, the lot size being smaller and the, and the impact fees being, being less, and then they're, they're likely to build a little bit smaller, you know, more livable house, you know, I mean, you're saving the average person, you know, twelve to fifteen hundred dollars a month in mortgage payment by what they're asking for here. You know, this makes it actually within reach of, of, of your everyday people rather than, than people moving in, you know, from out of state. So it's a huge financial impact. And it, it's not that it's going into the developer's pocket. They're trying to put it within reach of, of the end user.
The other question that comes to mind too is, so the current residents that are close by, what impact does a change in the environment due to their current value as well? So I, I mean, I'm just kinda caught in the middle. Like I'm, you know, if I lived across the street, you know, how would I feel about it? You know, lived in a development that was a certain way and then a different type of development comes. I think all of us understand the, the, you know, the, the struggle to provide affordable housing. And then, but I still am thinking too about those individuals that have been there for a while. Does, is there an economic impact that takes place on them uh, with the change in the environment?
You, you have houses just like this within like a mile of your house and it hasn't affected your value at all. I haven't within a mile of my house and they haven't changed the value of my house either. So I, I'm probably one street away from something like.
The, the other thing too is, most of us have had all these homes come in before. You know, I mean, we were living in, I, my first home was in Canterwood and none of these houses were there. So I've seen them move and it was a great home for me to move into, cause I could use it as a jump up house to get into something else and sell it. You know, I lived there. It's, I, I, I think it's a great plan. I like the layout. They fixed the stuff that we asked them to. It's not adding much more. It's, I mean, it is what it is and it's, he has the right. I think I, I like the layout. I like what they've done to it.
Commissioner Tuppo, um, I wasn't here during the last meeting, but from what I saw, the plot that I saw originally to this one is a huge improvement. Cause I like how they increased all of the lots surrounding the subdivision and then put the smaller lots in the middle. But I do prefer the dead end by the park because there's gonna be a lot of kids at the park.
But that, that creates.
Drew, maybe, maybe show the two options, Drew. If you wanna show the two options again, just to refresh memory. So there's option two, I think is the, is the option that tries to avoid the, I think it was the connectivity and, and the above-ground utility issues right at them of, of, of twenty East?
Yeah, so basically twenty East, uh, as we put this together, right as we're trying to come in between meetings and we started looking at this more with Public Works, there's a couple of things there. There's, um, from the conservancy water line, they have a great big air vac that sticks out of the ground like four feet. And we don't, we're not, the reason why the second option is in there is as we work through this with them, we don't think we can get that to work and be within what would be required for a, uh, intersection at twenty East to make that work. So there, there's just a bunch of utilities going through right there, way more than you'd normally see.
So Commissioner Tuppo, you've, you've stated your preference. It might be nice for the other commissioners to let the council know if there's one or the other that, that they prefer.
Commissioner Davis, and while you're up here, if, so it's, so how unworkable? Because for, for me, the preference would be if you can run the traffic through, you know, through, you know, dealing, navigating through these utilities. I think that, that's a cleaner option, but again.
You're saying to take the traffic like around through that? Yeah. And it's, and it's just gonna have to be when we work through it with. I've gotta, I've gotta deal with, I've got the city, I've got Dixie Power, I've got Washington Conservancy District, I've got St. George. St. George has the ownership of a line through there. So I got four people I gotta have agree that I can go through there and then also meet the standard that the city's gonna set forth for us to hit that intersection. So as of right now, it's, we're trying, but I, I would say that that's fifty-fifty whether I can get that to go through. I just have so many people have to tell me yes. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I, I, I've, I like parts of both of them. I think, I think option one is better flow through the neighborhood because rather than a direct shot through, it breaks it up, which I like. But I also like entities are, are in a cul-de-sac on the other one, which I think is better for, for kids in the neighborhood and so forth. So I think they both have merit, so.
It, it currently, I, I mean, I don't remember exactly, but I know that several of those lots don't have houses on them yet, so they, this would be the plan when they get there, the ones that are facing that road.
In making a decision tonight, do we determine what option takes place? I mean, we're not gonna, city council will make the decision, right? One or the other. So we're just making a recommendation of one or the other. But if, yeah, so really a rec, it's just a recommendation. It doesn't say which way it would go.
I believe option one will send a lot more traffic in front of the Paul's house.
And, and I think we, we wanted to present both options in case, cause the one might not be doable from a feasibility standpoint. So that's why it's like, hey, we gotta show, we're trying to get two accesses in here, but if I can't get, you know, some of these other people, cause the Conservancy District in St. George really don't care. That's.
I just know how many, how many, um, kids in that neighborhood just run and cross and their parents aren't really monitoring what they're doing and.
Yeah.
They're all gonna be at that park, running across the street.
It's what I would have done.
Yeah, I think, I like option two better, I think, I had to pick.
So this, this Commissioner Anderson, I, I mean, everything that we asked for and actually more than we asked for was changed. I mean, it's much better than last time. There's a lot more, you know, connectivity. It distributes the, the traffic through, you know, lots of different avenues, you know, rather than just one spot. The amenities are bigger, the, they did pull back from the flood zone, which is good. They really kept most of the, the flood zone out of, out of all those lots. Um, the, the setbacks being larger will help a bunch with keeping, you know, parking and stuff off the streets, which I think is really good. What, uh, from, from most of the comments today, I don't think people still understand that they're not asking for like something, like a special exception or variance. Like they have the right to ask for this. Like this is one of the allowed zones. They can ask for this or R one ten. It's not, this is, is not something special that they're asking for. They can do either one. Difference here is this one is a little more flexible. There's ten more lots and you get amenities and you get, you know, better streets, you get a trail, you get a whole bunch of other stuff that you wouldn't get with the other. So it's, I mean, of the two options, you know, we're getting ten extra houses. This is a much better option for, you know, for this land. It's a better option for the, the end user. The one thing I, I am worried about, Adam, and again, this, I mean, this liability rests on, you know, you guys. But I, I, I would make sure that, that, you know, your engineering of the, of the riprap and the protection zone is, is real solid, just cause, I mean, the one comment, I mean, I, I've looked at the same Google Earth, you know, data and it, and that the river moves about a thousand feet back and forth one way or the other. And right now it's about the closest it's been to the land in the last twenty years. Um, but it does move, so I would just make sure it's.
And just so you know, we actually hired Rosenberg to do that, cause they're the ones who do the majority of that. So we said, you guys are the best at it. They've designed the stuff that's north and south of here and they're working with the city on several other projects. So we had them give us the design for that because they're the experts.
With that said, them putting in this protection will protect that whole neighborhood, a lot more so than it currently is protected. So, I mean, the fact that they would be putting that in, it helps everybody around. I'm just, I would just say I'd make sure it's pretty beefy.
Yeah, it, it's beefy.
I do have a question. Um, are we requiring the amenities to be completed at a certain, um, completion?
Isn't that in the code, Drew? I think that's in the code that says it has to be completed by like fifty percent or something.
No, we really haven't. We've always had the ca, council add a condition. It's usually at twenty-five or thirty.
Okay.
And so it's, I would recommend whoever makes a motion, if you're doing it, I would put in there twenty-five or thirty, you know, at, at the C of O of twenty, you know, twenty-five percent or whatever you wanna propose. So it's, that's common, either one of them.
Looks, looks like it's in phase two.
I, it's, it's not, cause I've done a different layout.
Thank you, but.
I used to work at Bush and Gudgel as well, but it's not. I've done, I have other layouts that are seventy-seven.
Sorry, I'm meaning to address people.
So if you are gonna put a condition on the amenity, uh, because certificates of occupancy are more difficult to deny regu, regulatorily, we would prefer that you do it on building permits issued, mostly because it's easier to deny a building permit before they've relied on everything it takes to install and construct. And it's harder for a city to shut them down when they've already poured the pad and built the walls and all of that.
So just another question that's running in my mind. I believe there's other steps that will take place after this, right? You still gotta get clearance from FEMA for the river? No, at this point, you're cleared?
We have to get approval from the state to put in that protection. So if we go in, if we wanna change the floodline or say that this is no longer, the floodline's no longer in this area, then we have to go to FEMA. If we want to get into the ordinary high watermark, which is order, you know, that's governed by the Army Corps of Engineers, we'd have to go to those guys. But this is a state, this is just a state permit to get this put in. But we do have to go to the state, present them with what this riprap looks like, how that works, and they have to give us an approval on that.
Got you. So if, if for some reason there's a hiccup in that, um, would it come back to us if there's adjustments that have to be made to accommodate those requirements?
Change the PUD because of design or problem, they'd have to come a substantial change. I mean, if they had to push something five feet, we're not gonna come in and say, oh, we had to move, you know, three lots, five feet. We won't do that. But if there's a significant change, then it would come back to you.
PUDs still have to bring you Platts, right? And so the land use authority is still gonna see the residential applications that you already see for all the others. And so there's other process. They, they have to come back still.
But again, that's a distinction between the PUD and straight zoning.
Both PUD and straight zoning have to plat, the plat, the indivi, the.
Need to come to us.
Correct. Both of those, either one of those end up at the land use authority with a preliminary plat and then a, and then a final plat.
Thanks, Adam.
If there's no other questions, let's. Make a motion on this. As Commissioner Anderson, I. Make a motion to recommend approval of Z dash twenty-five dash oh eight. Recommend to the zone approximately thirty-five point four-two acres located at Heritage Field Drive and Nielsen Ranch Road. From the current Ag twenty zoning to the proposed uh open space and P U D R zoning designations with the findings and conditions outlined by staff. We wanna add a condition about the the amenities being, I guess, adding a condition that the amenities. Will be completed.
Or permit number twenty-seven.
After twenty-five percent of the building permits pulled. Building permit, twenty-five percent of building permit.
It's Commissioner Tupau, I second that.
I got a first by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Tupau. Individual voting. Commissioner Anderson?
I I will amend one little thing that that with that, I I recommend the option two, if that's possible, on the street layout.
Second that as well.
First and second, individual voting. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I think I'll be the odd one out on this. I'll say nay.
Commissioner Tupau?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. This will go to City Council next week. Item. Number seven is adjournment. Look for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Authority meeting for May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Item nu- item number one on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If we can get a motion to approve this agenda, please?
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we approve the agenda for May seventh meeting.
Phil's second.
Hey, can we get the officers in the back to be quiet, please? Did I have a second on the approval of the agenda?
Yep, I'll second that again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item number two, approval of the minutes from the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from the April tw- sixteenth. Uh, Land Use Authority minutes.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number three is the Declaration of Abstentions and Conflicts. Does anyone have any?
No.
All right, item number. Four A is the final plat approval for the Fields Crossing Minor Subdivision located at thirty-six fifty South Washington Fields Road. Okay, is David? Nizal?
Nizal.
Nizal. Sorry.
Thank you, Land Use. The applicant is asking to split the current twelve point zero-four acres into three parcels for commercial development. Parcels one and two are one point five acres and parcel three is nine point zero-four. Access to these parcels from the public right of way will be required to meet the access management plan. The zoning at this location was recently changed from A twenty to P U D C. And as noted, in the zone change, these parcels are required to receive design and use approval in line with the P U D C zoning designation. The surrounding zoning is P U D C to the north, A twenty to the east, P U D R and R one six to the south. And R one fifteen to the west. Staff has reviewed the requested proposal. And the minor subdivision conforms to the standards as set forth in the zoning regulations and subdivision ordinance of the city. In the northwest corner of this subdivision, there are above-ground utilities that the master planned trail will need to go around. And the trail has since been accommodated to to meet those requirements. Uh, the applicant was able to amend this plat and and widen the the trail easement there. To sh- that's shown on the exhibit there. Um, and also conditions six and seven have been added. To this report to make sure that 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 happens. And again, those corrections have been made on onto the plats. Staff recommends the Land Use Authority approve the Fields Crossing Minor Subdivision based on the following findings and subject to the following. Conditions as stated in in the report. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So this is Commissioner Mitchell. I'm just curious what the limitations are for access off of those main roads to those pieces of property? Will each lot have access off of George Washington?
Uh, n- n- no, Lot two will not. There'll need to be a, an access easement agreement. But between those two lots, which will come forth in the plating stage.
This is Commissioner Davis. So just for our understanding, what is the motivation for cutting it in this way? The lots?
Uh, thi- this will allow them to to sell each parcel if if they so desire.
What they've told the city is lots one and two, those smaller two are are being retained by the current landowner. And then the Lot three is gonna be sold off to a to a development entity. And so it's. I think if the if the development entity could have bought them all, that you wouldn't see it like this. But this is so that the current landowner can essentially keep two.
Instead of going vertical or something?
Correct. It's it's a, I think it's a uh, a uh, condition required by the current owner seller.
But we'll have, when those, since this is already zoned as P U D C, well, the the first two, all all three of them will be basically individual P U Ds, three, basically. Because there'll be three lots, we'll have three different P U D Cs for each one.
The the whole, the whole space is a P U D, but they will be individually owned and separately owned plots, or can be if if they're sold.
Okay, well, obviously, they're gonna sell the big one.
The P U D applies to all three.
Right, but I mean, they'll be, in the, they won't, it won't come in as one for the whole thing. There'll be three different applications, basi- more than likely.
Yeah, three different side parts, yeah.
Yeah, that's that's what I. Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yes, there'll be different applications.
So essentially, three different PUDCs. Okay. Thanks, Elton. This is a public hearing. If anyone here would like to speak to this. Isn't it? Oh, oh. Huh? Oh. Okay, well, never mind.
And on finals, the Land Use Authority is the final decision. So this would be a motion to approve.
So. No, sorry, guys, you can't talk about it. There's no public hearing.
Let's do it.
Sure, go ahead.
Commissioner Anderson, I move to approve the final plat approval for the Fields Crossing Minor Subdivision located at 3650 South Washington Fields Road with the findings and conditions outlined by staff.
Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
I have a first by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Individual voting. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Tupow?
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Bullock. I'm an aye as well. This is approved. Item number five A, preliminary plat approval for the rise at Coral Canyon Phase Three subdivision located at approximately 3670 East Telegraph. Elton will turn this over to you.
This particular subdivision is proposing 50 town home, five zero, town home units on an area covering 12.62 acres. This is a 3.96 density per unit acre ratio. The zoning designation at this location is PCD, and the surrounding zoning is PCD to the north, east, south, and west. The subdivision will have access to the amenities in Phase One, which are clubhouse, a pool, pickleball court. And this phase includes a 10,000 square foot open space amenity. All of the townhomes will include a two-car garage with a driveway that is 20 feet long and 28 designated visitor parking stalls. Parking is adequate for the subdivision. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is this getting known? To the people?
It did, correct, yes. This is a preliminary-
I'm just shocked.
Preliminary plat.
It's Coral Canyon. Okay. Draw that from the record, will you?
It's streaming live, dude.
Do you want to put your personal cell phone number on the record, Commissioner?
Those cat jokes will start coming in.
All right, thanks, Elton. Does anyone have any? Sorry, I should have asked anyone having questions for Elton, or if not, we'll look for a motion on this.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we recommend approval.
Approve.
Approve. Okay, it just says on there, recommend approval. That we approve the preliminary plat approval for rise at Coral Canyon Phase Three subdivision with the recommendations and conditions.
Commissioner Tupow, I second that.
I'm first from Commissioner Mitchell, and second from Commissioner Tupow. Individual voting. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Tupow? I'm Commissioner Bullock. I'm an aye as well. Item-
Adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.